Councilors, Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies, councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Matic will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillor Matic be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, motion of condolence, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the city of Brisbane mourns the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. Her Majesty's service to the Commonwealth, its nations and its people will go down in history as a monumental and exemplary deed of public service. Her Majesty has been a constant source of stability and steadfast leadership in an ever-changing world. Fewer of us will remember a time without her and the world will never forget her. On behalf of the city of Brisbane, we pass on our deepest condolences to her family and all of those mourning the loss of Her Majesty. May she rest in peace.
Seconded. Thank you. Councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, it is a very sad day. It's also quite an unusual day, not one that I've seen in my lifetime, but one you may be interested to know that this chamber has seen once before. In preparing for speaking on today's motion, we were able to identify the minutes of the meeting, which was the 1,730th meeting of the Brisbane City Council here in City Hall on the 12th of February 1952 at two o'clock. And what happened on that day is very similar to what happened today. We saw the Lord Mayor at the time, Alderman Sir John Chandler, and also the leader of the opposition, councillor Bennett, moving and seconding a motion of condolence for the passing of the King. And I will table these minutes, Mr Chair, for everyone's interest, but one thing that was apparent in those minutes was not only the bipartisanship which was displayed and the sense of grief and loss that was felt and the gratitude for service, but also in the various ways in which the community remembered at that time. And in those minutes, it identified that on noon, at Noon Day, that the bells of City Hall were rung 56 times in honour of the passing of the King, who at that stage was 56 years of age. So today I can confirm that on our National Day of Mourning, we will be ringing the bells of City Hall 70 times at noon to acknowledge the 70 years of service of Queen Elizabeth II. For an incredible 70 years, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II was part of our city, helping us to celebrate our highs and supporting us during some of our toughest times. Her Majesty's very first visit to Brisbane came in May 1954, less than a year after her coronation, and the visit was the start of a special relationship with our city and its people. The Queen has in fact been here in Brisbane at some of the pivotal moments in our city's history. The Commonwealth Games in 1982, the Queen was here in Brisbane. Expo 88, the Queen was here opening Expo 88. And of course, more recently, in 2011, after the devastating floods that impacted both Brisbane and Queensland, she was here, supporting our community, touring the devastated areas and also being part of a special ceremony with volunteers, emergency service workers and residents who were impacted. Now, while the role of the monarchy has evolved over the years, Her Majesty's great strength and wisdom ensured that she was both respected and loved around the world. Queen's kindness and compassion and care for the people of Brisbane will always be remembered. As we know, the Prime Minister has announced that Thursday, the 22nd of September, will be a National Day of Mourning and also a public holiday for all Australians. Now, going forward, most people will always remember where they were when they heard the news that the Queen had died. She was the steady hand which saw the governments of 15 UK Prime Ministers, from Winston Churchill to Liz Truss, and 16 Australian Prime Ministers, from Robert Menzies to Anthony Albanese, and also 16 New Zealand Prime Ministers as well, not to mention the many other Commonwealth countries and their leaders. I think there will never be another modern-day leader like her, someone who has not only witnessed the 20th century from a front-row seat, but has also helped to shape the 20th century. Some people may find themselves asking, what is the role of the Crown in a modern society? Now, the reality is, as we know, we are a fully independent, self-governed democracy. We and only we, Aussies, are responsible for our future and our destiny. We are a healthy democracy, and in fact, I would say that we are the world's healthiest democracy. But by the same token, institutions and traditions do help us to provide stability and continuity in times that are uncertain and changing. Now, these institutions, including the Crown, perform a non-political role which helps to counterbalance and provide stability despite political changes. And the Queen has been a source of stability and continuity like no other leader has been. As Queen, Her Majesty's focus was always to calm and unite people across the globe. It is far too easy for people to become divided, people in different countries, from different cultures. And so, in so many ways, the Queen worked to unite people. The nations of the Commonwealth are incredibly culturally diverse, yet Her Majesty was a unifying force across cultures and races and nations. And this unifying force went beyond the Commonwealth too. In fact, the Queen visited 117 different nations across the globe. Now, these were friendship missions. They were aimed at building closer ties between nations and their people. It's an incredibly positive legacy that Her Majesty has left when it comes to global relationships and also mutual understanding. And I wanted to touch on the many visits to Brisbane. They started in 1954 in March, when Queen Elizabeth visited Brisbane, Bundaberg, Okeechobee, Townsville, Cairns, Mackay and Rockhampton. It resulted in a Brisbane civic reception, a state reception, an executive council meeting and also here in City Hall, a Lord Mayor's Ball. In 1958, in February, Queen Elizabeth again visited Brisbane. There was a Brisbane civic reception, a state reception and functions at the exhibition grounds, the RNA, Brisbane Cricket Grounds and also at the University of Queensland. Queen visited again in 1963 in March. Visited Brisbane and Coolangatta and an enormous crowd gathered here at City Hall for a civic reception. In 1970, in April, Queen visited once again and her duties included opening the Brisbane District Courts. In 1977, in March, the Queen visited to celebrate her Silver Jubilee. And a civic welcome was followed by a dinner at Government House and a state reception at the Cloudland Ballroom of all places. In 1982, as I mentioned, the Queen came again for the Commonwealth Games and in fact, she was here for the closing ceremony, something that as a youngster I remember watching on TV. In 1988, the Queen was here to open a pivotal moment in our bicentennial year, but also Expo 88 here in Brisbane, which has transformed the city in so many ways. She also opened the Stockman's Hall of Fame at Longreach. And finally, the last visit in October 2011, when the Queen visited to meet the victims of the disastrous floods and storms of that year. But while she was here, she also got to witness South Bank as it is today. So she was here for Expo 88 and saw what it was, and then here to see South Bank and the wonderful legacy that that has created as well. And so, while we pay respects to the Queen, we also wish King Charles every success as he fulfills his new role. Filling the shoes of his mother is an incredibly massive task at the best of times, but filling the shoes of what many would say is an unprecedented modern leader, Queen Elizabeth II is an even greater one. We do wish him the best and we also look forward to welcoming him, hopefully very soon, in Brisbane. I just wanted to finish by reading out the statement that I put up on the day the Queen passed away. Brisbane has lost a Queen and the world has lost an icon. Few of us will remember a time when she wasn't our Queen. Seems like she has always been there and always would be. Countless global leaders have come and gone, but Her Majesty has been a constant source of stability and steadfast leadership in an ever-changing world. While the Crown's role has evolved, Her Majesty's great strength and enduring compassion has ensured she remained a leader who was both respected and loved around the world. On behalf of the residents of Brisbane, I would like to pass on our deepest condolences to her family and all impacted by the passing of Her Majesty. Rest in peace.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise today to extend our sincere condolences on the loss of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. The Queen loved Australia and its people, travelling to Australia 16 times, eight times to Queensland and here to Brisbane several times. She was the only monarch to do so and our city always welcomed her with open arms. On her first trip to Australia in 1954, it is estimated that seven of the 10 million Australians alive at that time saw the Queen in towns and cities across the nation. Her Majesty's presence incited excitement during the 1982 Commonwealth Games and her last visit to Brisbane in the aftermath of the 2011 floods offered great solace to those affected. In our age, there hasn't been a world leader and figure as constant as the Queen. The Queen has been a source of support and comfort for many around the world during difficult times. The monarch helped our nation celebrate significant milestones. Her Majesty had publicly and often acknowledged Australia's courage in the face of natural disasters and the nation's growth, progress and development. In her 70-year reign, including as Australia's head of state, the Queen saw countless politicians, world events and economies. She also lived through periods of great societal and social change. Queen Elizabeth's reign began in the 1950s. What followed here and abroad were things like legalising homosexuality, no-fault divorce, women's reproductive rights, counting Aboriginal people as people, abolishing the death penalty, same-sex marriage, the rise of a whole new form of authoritarian rule in Europe followed by its demise, and the dismantling of the British Empire and the democratisation of millions and billions of people around the world formerly under colonial rule. None of these things were because of the Queen or the monarchy, they were the product of liberal democracy and mass movements for change. But the incredible thing is how the Queen and the monarchy she so forcefully represented managed to survive and carve out such a special place for many people. This last 70 years has also been undoubtedly a period where a lifetime of dedicated public service was something of the exception, not the rule. I think for me, Paul Keating put it best in his heartfelt and generous tribute to Her Majesty when he said, "Queen Elizabeth attached herself to the public good against what she recognised as a tidal wave of private interests and private reward." She was an exemplar of public leadership, married for a lifetime to political restraint, remaining always the constitutional monarch. To the extent that an hereditary monarch can ever reflect the will or conscience of a people in the case of Britain, Queen Elizabeth assimilated a national consciousness reflecting every good instinct and custom the British people possessed and held to their heart. With her passing, her example of public service remains, with us a lesson in dedication to a lifelong mission in what she saw as the value of what is both enduringly good and right. That era has now passed. We have lost a significant part of us all. Rightfully, we must respect the traditions and customs of this mourning period. The commemoration of the Queen's life and legacy is above politics. There will be time for a discussion to happen in the future about what happens with the monarchy, of course. This is a moment in history and these kinds of seismic changes across the seas undoubtedly lead to changes in our own national consciousness. One without this Queen, of course, now and possibly in the future, one without a Queen or King ever again. The thousands of flowers and wreaths, the well wishes penned in condolence books across our city is testament to the deep respect Brisbane residents had for Her Majesty and that can never be taken away. There will be statues and monuments to Queen Elizabeth II, but her lasting legacy will always be dedication to service. She will be sadly missed.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Today, I rise to speak on this motion of condolence on the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. And I do so in the context of being not only a humble servant of hers as a British-born resident, but also as a citizen of Australia as well. Her service is something that we in this place should take on as a model exemplar. It is something, particularly with the length of service, that we could all aspire to, but many will never reach. To many across the world, for over 70 years, Her Majesty was a steadfast global leader. To others, she was a patron of many charities and causes which supported many people in need. Importantly, to her family, she was a beautiful human being who loved her children, her grandchildren and great-grandchildren, who are now her legacy. And she also dearly loved her lifelong partner and husband, His Royal Highness Prince Philip, her parents, King George VI and the Queen Mother, and also her sister, Princess Margaret. Today, we extend our condolences to the royal family on their personal loss, but also to all the subjects of the Commonwealth and other realms who, like all of us in Australia, have lost their monarch. I also acknowledge the many across the world who have pledged an oath of allegiance to the Queen in fulfilling their duty. My family members have loyally served the Queen in the Navy, Air Force and Army. As patron of the National Servicemen's Association here in Queensland, I know that in 1954, when Her Majesty was in Australia and met some Nashos who had formed up to greet her, it was a very momentous occasion for them. Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth was a woman of wisdom, dignity, grace, compassion, strength and incredible service. As a woman, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II demonstrated her capacity to serve, lead and work hard for the people without reference to her gender. In a time when many women across the world look to others for inspiration, Queen Elizabeth II led the way in demonstrating that skills, capability and knowledge are the best components that we need to take forward. In 2013, it was a privilege when I was in the role of deputy to the Lord Mayor on the restoration of City Hall here. When we were reopening and rededicating our City Hall, it was my privilege to ensure her portrait was returned here to this very council chamber in recognition of her role, but also our Westminster system of government. Over the years, I have corresponded with Her Majesty and the royal family on numerous occasions and I've brought some of the letters that I've received here with me today, but I just would like to reflect on a couple of excerpts of some of those letters. In 2013, Her Majesty and the Duke of Edinburgh conveyed that they were delighted with the arrival of their great-grandson, Prince George of Cambridge, now Prince George of Wales, and were much moved by the expression of good wishes. In 2013, and Lord Mayor, I know that this was a phone message that we shared at the time, and Her Majesty greatly appreciated the message of congratulations on the behalf of the constituents on the recent birth of the Queen's great-granddaughter, Princess Charlotte of Cambridge. And Her Majesty was interested to know how the Story Bridge in Brisbane was illuminated in pink at the time of Her Royal Highness's birth and was very touched by the affectionate support expressed towards her family on that occasion. And I know that was something that you certainly ensured occurred, Lord Mayor, so that is something that is part of our history here in our city. And this is one of my treasured components of the correspondence. It was a message from Buckingham Palace on the 60th anniversary of the Queen's ascension to the throne. And to just have that recognition of loyalty and support from Her Majesty was quite significant. On a personal note, having been born in the largest fishing port in the northern hemisphere and with heritage stretching back across England, Scotland, Wales and Ireland, I grew up abundantly aware of the statute of Edward II that any catch of sturgeon, otherwise known as the fish royal, had to be offered for the monarch's plate. There were a number of these occasions of offering to the monarch by my great-grandfather and grandfather, who owned multiple fishing trawlers over the years, not only to Her Majesty, but also to her father and grandfather. Today, I stand here and speak on this condolence motion as a mark of respect to our sovereign, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, to her absolute selfless service and dedication to duty. Over seven decades, there has been complete commitment to upholding her pledge to serve for as long or short as her life would be. Her legacy is in the next generations of the royal family who have had the benefit of her wisdom, tutelage and love. Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II will be truly missed. May she rest in peace.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak in relation to the condolence motion here today in the passing of Queen Elizabeth II. And it's a great, I think it's a, I sat down yesterday to put together some thoughts about what I wanted to say here today and I know we only get 10 minutes, 10 minutes or so to do so. And it didn't take me long to come up with three, three things that I wanted to reflect on in the life of the Queen. And the first one, well, there was the three things, which was devotion, integrity and respect. Devotion to her people, her family and her faith. 70 years of devotion that she undertook to the commitment to Australia, to England and of course, the Greater Commonwealth. In, when she travelled, well, we heard from other speakers over the last few days, there were 16 tours and visits to Australia. And, but the other thing too is that she travelled probably more than any other monarch in the history of the world. She was always, she was always going somewhere, whether it was within England, Ireland or Wales. She, her diary obviously was just filled with wanting to devote herself to her people. On the tour in 1954 here, she travelled to 60 cities and towns. And that would have been not easy travel in Australia at the time. A lot of that would have been by motor vehicle. And I'm sure there was a lot of dusty, dusty roads that they traversed in that time. And as we heard as well, 7 million of the 10 million Australians, 70% were able to either see the Queen or be in the general area of where the Queen was visiting. Integrity, of course, the world, in regards to integrity, in this world, integrity has sort of been jettisoned by so many of our leaders in this time. And, but the Queen, of course, her integrity was never really ever questioned, alright? Her honesty and truth never wanes. Many challenges and events in the Commonwealth, in the countries, even with her own family, but she always held up that her integrity would win out and did. Respect. You only have to look at every poll that I'm aware of, when the Australian public was asked about the Crown or about the Queen, the majority were in favour of the Queen and the work that she was undertaking on behalf of the Crown. But respect, of course, is a two-way street and she always respected, as we find out with the various stories that have come out in the last few days, she always respected anyone she spoke to and they gave her the respect in return. She respected the sovereignty of every country and its determination. She would offer her guidance when asked and support the outcome of the people's choice. One of the quotes that I heard recently and I thought I would quote, and that was that, "Grief is a price that we pay for love." And of course, right across the world, there's a lot of grief. The people are grieving for the loss of the Queen. And, but I think that's a terrific quote to remember when even one of your own loved ones is failing or has passed away. Loving, compassionate and caring, I think we can all, those are all adjectives that describe the former monarch, Queen Elizabeth II. She was a leader that you could look up to. She was a sovereign you could depend on. A rare human being that embodied those humanitarian traits that we all should aspire to. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Strunk. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Alright, thank you. I rise to speak on the motion of condolence on the passing of Her Majesty, the Queen Elizabeth II. I read this motion with some interest when it came through at nearly two o'clock yesterday. And I'm really sad that we did not do a motion of appreciation for her service. I understand that condolences are appropriate and I understand that, you know, this is one of the options available. But to me, the Queen has lived a life of service to others that has been marked by duty, responsibility and certainly a real sense of civic duty and pride through her whole life. And of course, that started when she became the heir to the throne quite unexpectedly and then had to step in to fill her father's shoes when he passed away in the 1950s. And even before that, you got a sense that she wanted to be part of society, to contribute to society when she served in the Women's Auxiliary during the Second World War. And she worked as a mechanic, I know, having seen and read many things about her, how proud she was of that service that she gave as a teenager back in World War Two. So to me, we should be appreciating the service of the Queen to Great Britain, to Australia as our head of state and to all the Commonwealth countries that have been part of her realm. And certainly, I think, based on her observations, that the decline of the British Empire led to the establishment of the Commonwealth. And I think that is something that the Queen has been instrumental in and has been extremely proud of right throughout her lifetime. It is very interesting, I think, in listening to the Lord Mayor and the leader of the opposition and councillor Strunk so far today, that so many huge global events have happened over her 70-year reign. And through it all, she has provided a continuous, respectful and steadfast leadership as a head of state that has not interfered with progress, that has ensured that a liberal democracy has flourished in pretty much. democracy has flourished in pretty much all the countries in which she is the head of state and certainly throughout the Commonwealth. And within those countries, we have seen enormous social change, technological change. And just so much has happened over that reign. And, you know, it, it, it's not necessarily, I think, something that another leader might have been able to allow just to roll through, as the Queen did. But she respected her role as a constitutional monarch. She realised that engaging in politics was not something that was appropriate. And yet, in all the countries where she was the head of government, they are the shining light of liberal democracies around the world, including our own. I, I want to pay my respects by acknowledging her service as a female world leader. There aren't very many of those and it's been really fascinating to see some of the coverage over the last few days and recognising that young women around the world have appreciated the Queen as a female world leader. To most of us, having grown up with the Queen, she's just always there. But I, I watched a lot of young women who were stopped on the street and asked what they thought, thinking, oh yeah, they won't value the Queen or they'll see her as some older lady. I mean, the grandmother of the nation came up quite a lot, but one young woman just called her a boss, an absolute boss. And I think that's a very good reflection in, in the modern parlance of a, a woman who was a head of state and exercised that role for over seventy years with such distinction and, you know, such civic-minded service to others. And I think that's the thing that you take away from the Queen. Yes, she came from a very wealthy background and, and was a very privileged person, but I, I believe that her faith and sense of duty meant that she gave her all to her role as the head of state. I know she was certainly the longest-serving British monarch and British head of state. She was the second-longest-serving head of state in the world, behind one of the French presidents many years ago. She was the patron of over six hundred charities and organisations. And supporting those works and making sure that the spotlight could be shined on all of those organisations in our community was, was an essential part of her role and that of the wider royal family. And that is a big part of, of what her service to the community was about. She was, I think, probably at heart, a fairly simple woman. She loved horses, dogs and a gin and tonic every day. So I think that's a pretty amazing thing. Her contribution in Australia was really quite significant over many years and there are two visits that I would like to reflect upon. The first is her Silver Jubilee visit to Australia in nineteen seventy-seven. That was the first time that I met the Queen. And I had the great opportunity to talk to my mum a little bit about this last night because the story as it goes is, I'd just started school, I'd just turned five and I'd just started school at Sacred Heart in Queenbyannan and the royal tour happened. And as they did back in the day, all the schoolkids were out of school, lined up on the street, ready to talk to the Queen. So, me, being me, I was put at the front and I think they probably thought I'd be very chatty if the Queen came over. Well, the Queen did come over and she stood and asked me what school I went to. And the story goes in our household, it's the only time Nicole's not had a response to a question. Mum said I just was looking at her transfixed and I didn't say anything. So the Queen looked up at mum, who was standing behind me, she was helping the teachers that day. And she looked at mum and mum said, oh, this is Sacred Heart. And the Queen then asked mum, so you're one of the teachers? Oh no, I'm just a mum here helping. And that's our, that's our first interaction and in fact, only interaction with the Queen. But I, I don't actually remember this, but I do remember all of the photos and mum remembers it extremely vividly. I think largely because in nineteen fifty-four, she was one of those schoolkids that was in the street for hours on end, waiting to see the Queen on her first tour of Australia. But most importantly, I think, for the community that I represent, was after the floods. And, sorry, it's the floods that are upsetting me. I just want to say that a lot of people find royal visits to be a little bit superfluous, I think, just a little bit of imagery. But the community that I represent was very badly hit by the two thousand and eleven floods. And when the Queen and Prince Philip came to visit, a number of people who had performed extraordinary acts of community service were invited to a function to meet the Queen and Prince Philip. And that included Melinda MacIntyre, who was the head of the volunteer effort for the floods in Yorongah, and she's now the coordinator of the Yorongah Community Centre. And her mate that she met when I sent her up to the centre to help out, Fiona. And they got dressed up, they bought hats, they weren't sure who they were going to meet, they, there's a lot of formality around the process, you're told you'll be in the room with all these other people. And Melinda said it's one of the best experiences of her life because their service to our community was recognised, the Queen and Prince Philip paid interest in what was happening in our community and the floods. And I know that the Queen's visit certainly was very supportive, as she has been through many other natural disasters in this country. So, as I said, it's probably a shame she's not back this year, but I, I hear some other royals might be coming. I would just like to again, put on the record my appreciation for the Queen's service to others, for her service to democracy, for her faith and her sense of civic responsibility that she performed throughout her life. I would also like to pass on my condolences to her family and all those who mourn her loss around the world. I would just like to finish by saying that I wish we would continue with the business of council today. The Queen was nothing if but somebody who was committed to duty and to, even up until the day before she passed away, she was carrying out her constitutional responsibilities. And we should be doing the same.
Further speakers? councillor Strye, ring another.
Thanks Chair. Rise to speak on the condolence motion and I think it would be remiss of me not to begin by acknowledging that we're on yagor and turbo country and paying respects to the elders of this place and to acknowledge that Brisbane is built on stolen land and that the British Empire has a long history of complicity in that oppression and dispossession of First Nations peoples. But I, I did want to add, add my words to this and, and also pass on my condolences to the, the family of the Queen and to anyone else who's mourning her loss. We have a strong taboo in society against speaking ill of the recently deceased and I'm inclined to respect that taboo. But on the other hand, we do also have an important value in healthy democracies that people in positions of power should never be, be beyond critique. And certainly now is not the time to be speaking ill of someone who's passed away. But on, on the, by the same token, I think it's very important that the death of a monarch is never used as a political weapon or a political tool to silence or discourage legitimate criticism of monarchies, which are very oppressive and unjust institutions in and of themselves. So I think we can simultaneously, simultaneously hold the idea in our head that it's sad that someone has passed away, but also monarchies are really unjust and we'd be a lot better off without them. What has been disappointing about recent political discourse around the passing of the Queen has been the vitriol and overt racism that a lot of people have experienced simply because they dared to say, oh, I'm not personally too fussed about the passing of the Queen. That's a sentiment that a lot of people feel. Some of us are really concerned and saddened about the Queen's death, some of us aren't too concerned about it at all. But those people who have expressed that latter sentiment have in some cases been subjected to really violent and awful abuse. And certainly I've copped that in the last few days with a lot of really racist and xenophobic commentary directed at my way, simply because I said I didn't care much for the British Empire. And, and I guess I would just want to point out to the elected reps in this chamber that different people do have different feelings about the Queen and the monarchy and don't want to say that anyone else's feelings are invalid, but just want to remind people to be conscious of that and to recognise that right now, for some people, the, the death of the Queen is, is a cause of, of significant grief and for some people, the death of the Queen is a cause of relief. And we as elected representatives have to acknowledge that and be mindful of that and recognise that particularly for First Nations people, for colonised peoples around the world, the Queen was a symbol of an oppressive regime. And that is the reality that we have to be mindful of in terms of how we conduct our business. And that's one of the reasons I have concerns about supporting this particular motion because I think it, it glosses over and perhaps, I, look, I don't, I don't want to be too negative, but I, I do think it glosses over some of the negative impacts of the, of the Queen's time in office and of the, of the British Empire and the monarchy as an institution. And I think it's, it's disappointing that we don't make enough space in public debate to have those mature and nuanced conversations. And I'm mindful that even as I stand up here and, and articulate these ideas, I'm exposing myself to bad faith, political critique or partisan attacks. But I'm simply seeking to eject into the conversation the fact that for some people, the, the Queen was not someone they particularly looked up to or felt affection towards and as elected reps, we do need to be mindful of that. I will, will also just point out in response to some of the commentary here today that contrary to those implications, monarchies are inherently political institutions that actively influence public policy and government decision-making. Sometimes monarchies are quite subtle about that and sophisticated, but I think it would be a little naive or silly of us to pretend that monarchs, including the British monarchy, are not political roles. They, they wield immense power, they do play a significant role in, in creating divisions between those who are the subjects of an empire and those who are the objects of exploitation and oppression by an empire. And certainly, the late Queen was no exception to that. There's a long and well-recorded history of the ways in which she influenced public policy and government decision-making, both for the better and for the worst. And I think it would be a disservice to her legacy if we didn't acknowledge that as well and recognise that, like all of us, she was a complex individual. She was not pure and good, nor was she evil. She was a human being. And I think none of us in this place can really claim that we actually knew what she was like or that we actually knew how well she did at her role because everything we know about her is translated and presented to us through a very well-managed media and PR machine that shapes narratives around monarchy and the royal family and crafts how we see and perceive them. And so I think we need to be a little bit clear-eyed about that. But yeah, I, I do think it is sad when, when anyone passes away and, and I'm, I do add my condolences to the family and to anyone else who's saddened by the Queen's passing.
Thank you councillor. Any further speakers? No further speakers. I'll now put the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. We now return to the meeting agenda.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Under section eleven of the meeting's local law, I move that the notified motion on today's agenda be brought forward for consideration at this time.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor, that the minute, that the meeting be adjourned to another time. Okay, sorry, so it's a notified motion, my apologies, Lord Mayor, that, and the motion is, the notified motion that was later in the agenda has been moved forward. And it is, in the light of the death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second and in keeping with the convention, this meeting be adjourned until the day of the next scheduled ordinary meeting of council. Is there any debate?
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I am seeking further information from the Lord Mayor regarding the notified motion that's been provided today. Could he advise, when he refers to the convention in this motion, what convention he is referring to that means we have to conclude parliament, sorry, conclude council today?
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In accordance with the convention that is mentioned in this motion, it is a sign of respect of all three levels of government to pause momentarily their proceedings to show and acknowledge, show respect and acknowledge the passing of the Queen or the head of state or the monarch. Now, this is not something that Brisbane City Council is alone doing, this is something that is happening at all three levels of government. And right now, the federal parliament has been paused, the state parliament has been paused and so has the Brisbane City Council. Now, it is called convention, it is not law, it is not a requirement, it is simply a sign of respect. Now, as, as we've discovered today, respect is optional. Some people choose to show it and some people don't. And so simply today, I'm asking that councillors will join me in showing respect by joining the convention of the other two levels of government to pause our proceedings momentarily. Now, I know councillors are keen to get on with the ordinary business of this council. That will be the opportunity that comes at the next scheduled meeting. We have done this before, that we'll get ample opportunity to have this say on whatever submissions come through and whatever issues come up, but I'm simply asking councillors...
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you councillor Strye, ring another.
Will the, may I take a quick question?
Apparently not, no.
Point of order then, Chair.
Point of order to you.
I was just wondering if you could clarify the rules for me. If, if this meeting is adjourned, does that mean there will be essentially two question times on the next date of the ordinary meeting?
Correct.
Thanks.
As I was saying, Mr Chair, we'll have the opportunity to have the meeting that was scheduled for today at the next, at the date of the next ordinary meeting and in fact, there will be two meetings on that day. So two question times, two E and C reports, two lots of committee reports. We've done it before, in fact, for the February floods. So councillors do know the drill and I'm simply asking that they join me in showing some respect on the passing of the Queen.
Thank you. Further debate? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Rise to speak against this notified motion. Just picking up on some of the things the Lord Mayor said, and I accept that, that there is a convention here in Australia, not one that is shared in the United Kingdom Parliament, they have continued business. And obviously an opportunity, obviously an opportunity for, for, for members of parliament, former prime ministers in that chamber to speak and offer their own condolences officially, but that, that has continued. There, there obviously is a convention in Australia where parliaments are able to delay their sittings to maybe a week or two weeks later. That's not something that's available to this council. The advice we received back in February is that once the sitting calendar is set and scheduled, this council must stick to it, other than by resolution of the council itself in changing that. So what we have, which has some similarities to the delayed meeting or the adjourned meeting in February, is that it'll occur at the next meeting. The difference here is that the next meeting was the week after in February, the next meeting we have is the last week in October. So I do accept what the Lord Mayor says in that the state parliament and the federal parliament is pausing momentarily because they can make those sitting days up. The state parliament and the federal parliament are scheduling extra days to make up for that lost time. That's not something that is being proposed here today. I think the city, the city, the residents of Brisbane and this council has shown solemn respect. We've just had a condolence motion and seeing people streaming into City Hall from the moment those condolence books were placed there and seeing people lay tributes up at, at Government House and signing official condolence books shows that, to me, that the people of Brisbane are certainly showing that solemn respect. But there are important issues for council to consider. When we don't meet as a council chamber, as elected representatives of Brisbane, a lot of things are delegated to the Establishment and Coordination Committee in the absence of a council meeting, or to council CEOs. So I would certainly like some clarification from the Lord Mayor when he sums up or another speaker, in that any of these items before us today are going to be delegated to E and C or to the CEO to make decision? And then we will simply be, be presented with an information report after recess, like all of the other decisions that E and C would make over that long recess period? Or will all those matters be carried over and then be open for, you know, basically a truncated debate on the twenty-fifth or... a truncated debate on the 25th or 24th or 25th of October? We do show respect for the passing of the monarch. We've done so today, and we continue to do so. But in picking up something that councillor Johnston said, the lesson we learnt from the Queen was a dedication to service, working every day of the week, and we think we can probably do both today.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. I don't want to drag this out too much, but just wanted to place on the record that I'm also firmly opposed to adjourning the meeting. I take issue with the suggestion that there's a convention that's been established, because my understanding is that conventions tend to emerge through repetition and a general consensus that this is the way we're going to do things, because that's the way we've done things in the past. But there haven't actually been enough deaths of monarchs in the lifetime of Brisbane City Council that we can say that a convention has emerged. And a lot has changed since the passing of the previous monarch. So I wholeheartedly reject any suggestion that there is a convention that Brisbane City Council should adjourn when a monarch dies. And I have consulted with a couple of colleagues in other council jurisdictions around Australia, and they were all quite amused by the suggestion that Brisbane City Council was adjourned or delaying its meeting. As far as I'm aware, other councils in Sydney, Melbourne, et cetera, are not taking a day off, and I don't think there's any good grounds for us to do so here either. I also think, it's, you know, it's kind of weird, like, when people in this chamber have close relatives pass away, we don't take a day off as a sign of respect, even though that's probably something that's more significant to more people in this chamber. I'm much less concerned about the passing of a monarch in another country than I am about the welfare and feelings of our colleagues here in this chamber. And so I think it's a bit odd that we would cancel an entire meeting because someone we didn't really know has died. It's, it just, I mean, we're getting a public holiday anyways, I would have thought that should be enough. I would just add, though, that, and I hope the mayor would be gracious enough to seriously consider this, that it would be, I think, advisable to start the adjourned meeting slightly earlier in the day on that, when we return from the recess period. And I'd like to ask that the LNP administration consider starting the meeting at 12 o'clock, for example, so that we're not all stuck here until, like, 9pm, and so that we don't end up in a situation where the meeting has to be adjourned or carried over or whatever. I've sat through some pretty late council meetings in this chamber in the past, and it's really annoying when we're still stuck here at 9 or 10pm, when we could have started...
Deputy Mayor, please.
When we could have started earlier in the day. So I'll leave that suggestion with the LNP councillors, perhaps they would consider a motion that the adjourned meeting can start slightly earlier than the 1pm time. There's no point me moving it, because you guys won't agree to it unless you've moved it yourself. But please do consider that, because I think it would be nice if we could start an hour earlier and therefore get home an hour earlier as well.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Right. Talk about a way to blot your copybook, Mr Chairman. The Lord Mayor, on one hand, wants to commemorate and venerate Queen Elizabeth II as the head of Australia, but then shirks his own duties in this place and fails to honour the significant service that she has exhibited right throughout her life and her devotion to duty. It is ridiculous that the Lord Mayor is proposing to cancel the second council meeting of the year. Not once, first time for the floods, this is the second time in this year, 2022, that the Lord Mayor is counselling a council meeting. Now, the outcome of that, the Lord Mayor, I'm sure will stand up and say, oh, I'm causing a fuss over nothing. But the outcome of that decision is that there are a bunch of decisions now that sit in limbo for six weeks, until council resumes in October. There are, there is a huge agenda today that is supposed to be discussed, planning changes, annual reports, financial reports, and petitions, and everybody is left in limbo for six weeks because of a non-existent convention. If there was a convention, if there was some, you know, long history of doing this around the world by councils, we would have heard it from the Lord Mayor. But what do we get? We got silence. This is a confected approach to dealing with this issue. The outcome of it is, it actually undermines our democracy, because it lessens the transparency and accountability of this council to rate payers. And I can tell you one thing that I know about the Queen, every single day, she did her job. She did it up until the day before she died, in swearing in a new British Prime Minister and seeing the old one out the door. But it's too much hard work for the LNP and this Lord Mayor to actually pay their condolences and respect, and then get on with the business of governing the city of Brisbane, which is what we are paid to do. I think that the Lord Mayor has forgotten that it's not just about being seen to do the right thing, it is actually doing the right thing. And he's not doing the right thing by counselling the council meeting today. And I find it abhorrent, because the outcome of it is, when we resume in October, this huge meeting will be jammed into a Tuesday afternoon, where the first meeting back from session is usually quite large, and we are all going to be put under enormous pressure, meeting till very late at night, because the Lord Mayor doesn't want to do his job today, does not want to do his job today. He's getting a day off next Thursday, where he can go out and he can grieve in the way he wants to grieve on the National Day of Memorial, but today's a workday. And I don't think for one second the Queen would think that we should be shirking our duties, like the Lord Mayor and the LNP want to do today. So, I wasn't going to move the motion, but I am now, and you can thank councillor Sri for that, and he better second it. Yeah, sorry, Sri Ranganathan, I apologise, councillor Sri Ranganathan. That, I understand that the Lord Mayor wants to, you know, change things or respect the Queen, but we can't not do our job as well. So I'd like to move an amendment, which I'll do in a few minutes, but I just want to say that it is just not acceptable that this administration, which has been in power for far too long, repeatedly, repeatedly now, is cancelling council meetings because it is not convenient for them to do their jobs. That is a sign of a tired and out-of-touch administration. And it does not serve our city to put off the business of government, to put off the business of service to the people of Brisbane. And it is unacceptable that so many important issues today are not going to be up for debate, including, you know, the financial business of this city. I find it just appalling that the Lord Mayor is doing this, there is no reason to do so. I too, like the leader of the opposition, have noted that the fact that the British Parliament is still sitting. I'm pretty sure that whatever convention that the Australian Parliament's got going was probably written 70 years ago or 80 years ago, and no one's probably updated it since then. That could do with a little bit of updating as well. Because the proper place to pay your respects is within the system of, the democratic system that the Queen was the head of, and now King Charles is the head of. So I just do not understand the Lord Mayor's thinking here. It is not disrespectful to get on with the job. That was what the Queen was all about. It actually, I think, disrespects her memory and her service by failing to get on with the job that we are here to do. And again, the real and practical outcome of this is the Lord Mayor's decision lessens the accountability, the scrutiny, and the transparency of the decision-making process at this council, which I can tell you, the LNP are doing a very bad job carrying out. It is just unreasonable that we will have to do all of this, have two meetings on one day. It is extremely difficult and unpleasant to do that. It's difficult for the clerks, it's difficult for families, it makes it a really long and draining day for everybody, and no doubt that meeting back in October will be. So I'm going to move the following amendment, that delete the words "after" and "until" the day of the next scheduled ordinary meeting of council, and insert "an additional ordinary council meeting is scheduled prior to the next scheduled meeting to replace the lost sitting day in reflection of Her Majesty's sense of duty and civic responsibility."
Sorry, councillor Johnston, I didn't get all the words, so I assume we're going to circulate that.
Yep.
Can you repeat it, please?
I can. Billy's. Thank you. Billy has a copy, and I do have other copies here as well.
Oh, thank you. Now received it, has this been seconded?
Yes.
Yeah, seconded, okay. Councillor Johnston, to your amendment.
No, no, look, I'll be very quick, I've prosecuted my argument already. I don't think we should be adjourning the meeting today, and if the Lord Mayor votes against this amendment, which I'm sure he will do, then I'll be voting against the substantive amendment. I would really prefer we just got on with the meeting today, but the LNP have the majority here, but I don't want to put everybody under pressure to jam two meetings into one, and I think we should reschedule this day for the meeting as soon as possible. I haven't specified a date, and I'm sure the Lord Mayor can do that, but that is exactly what the Prime Minister of the country did. So the Prime Minister, Anthony Albanese, has rescheduled the lost sitting week as soon as he possibly could, after all the formalities have been undertaken. So I don't know why this Lord Mayor is not doing the same. But as I said, I would much prefer the meeting continue today, but I want to put another option on the table to see whether this might be acceptable to the LNP.
Thank you. Further speakers to the amendment? No further speakers to the amendment. So we now move to the vote on this amended motion. All in favour of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it. We return to the substantive motion. Any further debate on the substantive motion? Lord Mayor?
This afternoon, as we were gathering together before this meeting, I said to my colleagues, let's see how many councillors try and make this all about them, and all about what day one. I had hoped that no one would do that, but today, sadly, I was proven wrong. Now, when councillor Cassidy, as the leader of the opposition, gets up and complains about this, why isn't he complaining about the state and federal parliaments doing exactly the same thing? Labor governments at both levels doing exactly the same thing.
Councillor Johnston, please.
And in fact, the claim that this meeting has been cancelled is just plain wrong. It has been postponed, it will be rescheduled, and it will be held together with the next scheduled sitting day. It is not being cancelled, it is simply being postponed. There's been a lot of false claims that have been made already in a short period of time. The first one was quite breathtaking, is councillor Sri Ranganathan's suggestion that everyone's taken the day off. Is it, hands up, is anyone taking the day off today?
No.
We're actually here, and we've been working all day, and we will continue to work. So I'm not sure about this idea of taking the day off, I don't know anyone who's taking the day off today, and certainly the members of my team aren't taking the day off. It sort of indicates a perception that the only thing that councillor Sri Ranganathan and councillor Johnston seem to get, think they get paid for, is a couple of hours on a Tuesday afternoon.
Councillor Johnston, please do not call out from across the floor.
Now, I know that certain councillors love the opportunity to come in here and wax lyrical for a couple of hours and then vote against everything, but there's actually a lot more to our role than that. It is an important part, but it's only one part of a very complicated role and an ongoing role. And so our team continues to operate to provide services and projects for the people of Brisbane all the way through this mourning period, but what we're doing is we're pausing the politics. We're pausing the politics. Unfortunately, some people didn't get the memo. Some people use this as an opportunity to play politics, and it's really disappointing. But the whole point of the conventions, whether they be federal, state, local, whether they be in the UK, is to pause the politics. The business of council continues, day by day, the services continue, the rubbish gets collected, the roads get resurfaced, the footpaths get redone, and the parks get cut, but we pause the politics for one meeting. Now, in state and federal parliament, they're wiping clean days and days of sitting, days and days of sitting. One meeting.
Councillor Johnston.
In this council has been paused, and we will re-adjourn in accordance with the next scheduled meeting. Now, there's also been another false claim that, oh, the UK Parliament is meeting. Well, what's the UK Parliament actually doing? On the first day following the Queen's death, the elected reps got together to declare their allegiance to the King. That's what they did. And then on day two and three, they all took the opportunity to speak and pay tribute to the Queen, similar to what we did today. That's what they did. And then they paused for 10 days following that. So we've heard some lies being peddled in this chamber today. This is consistent with what is happening, not only at the federal and state level, but also in the UK Parliament as well. And it is simply about pausing the politics to pay tribute and show some respect. I didn't think that would be a hard decision for councillors to make, and certainly on this side of the chamber, it's an easy decision to make. I'm disappointed it is so hard for others to pause the politics.
I'll now put the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Johnston and councillor Sri Ranganathan. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, if you're resolved, please.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 6 against.
This motion is carried, the meeting stands adjourned. Councillors, we now resume the meeting of 13 September 2022 at item three on the agenda, which is the minutes. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,691st meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of September 2022, be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,691st meeting of council held on 6 September 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the next item on the agenda was a public participant, but he was moved to the meeting we just had for the 25th of October, so we can skip on to the next agenda item, which is question time. Are there any questions of the City Cabinet Chairs? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the Shriner Council has been working hard to ensure our city is prepared to cater for our population growth, while also providing the amenity that residents expect of a capital city. Can you please update the chamber on the recent release of the Brisbane Industrial Strategy?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, thank you councillor Atwood for the question. Last Friday, I had the pleasure of releasing our latest industrial strategy, appropriately named Brisbane, Our Productive City. The updated strategy is about adopting a more agile and a flexible approach to industrial land use to reflect the dynamic and evolving nature of industrial activity and ensuring sites are optimised for all stakeholders. We have also deliberately minimised the reliance on the word "industry", and instead think more about land uses that support productive employment and related activities. For many... For many, the word industrial still conjures up images of smokestacks belching fumes into the air or of noisy, dirty, smelly or otherwise hostile environments. With few exceptions, these types of activities have left or in the process of leaving precincts which may have been their home for many decades. The previous Brisbane Industrial Strategy was released back in 2019, however, we have not waited decades to update this strategy. Spurred on by the challenges created by the coronavirus, many are leaving in response to changing industry methods of production and distribution. We have seen a rise in demand for warehousing and logistics motivated by the increase in e-commerce and online shopping, as well as advances in technology. Many businesses are also looking for new facilities on larger sites closer to major transport routes. And so our challenge has been to provide for contemporary industrial land uses in locations where modern industrial enterprises want to go, while at the same time liberating older legacy industrial precincts and allowing them a new future more relevant to the needs of the community. We also acknowledge that change is not just necessary, but now essential. The state government hosted a housing summit last week to address a critical housing shortage across the region. It is acknowledged that local governments have a role to play. How can we reconcile a shortage of land for housing while still locking up land uses in antiquated zonings for industrial activities that are no longer wanted or needed in these locations? This is why our Productive City supports council's current policy of sustaining industrial land supply and enabling active industrial precincts to advance, renew and evolve. The strategy outlines four key principles and these are unlocking opportunity, a culture of innovation, creating great places and an environment to prosper. Under these principles, we've applied three planning approaches, namely adapting, transitioning and renewing to ensure we continue to support industry and meet the needs of the city into the future. We will focus on adapting selected industry precincts for higher value industry, employment opportunities and non-industrial activities. This will enable the creation of precincts that can foster high amenity areas with non-industrial support services. This includes our current strategic inner-city industrial areas, which have been renamed urban enterprise areas and will deliver a mix of industry, employment and lifestyle opportunities to create a vibrant community. We will transition current industrial zone lands that do not have long-term value for industrial purposes as a basis for suburban and urban renewal. Council will actively review specific sites and areas that are better suited to a non-industrial future or have partially or fully transitioned away from industrial use through a precinct planning process to determine the best future use. Finally, we will renew the strategically important industrial land with a continued focus on industrial uses and productivity. One area of renewal is within our major industrial areas. MIA's will continue their strategic role in supporting industry activity and be renewed to deliver the right zoning to meet future demands and much-needed service hubs for workers. This new industrial workforce trained in science, technology, engineering and mathematics will work alongside those with vocational qualifications and will be attracted by lifestyle factors, amenities and convenience. This will occur while we provide better support for our existing traditional industrial businesses and make things easier for the industrial businesses of the future to establish themselves in Brisbane. The Shriner Council's vision is clear and that is to advance and renew Brisbane's industrial economy, to be globally competitive and locally resilient. The renewed industrial strategy will guide the transformation of Brisbane's industrial areas into high-value and well-designed places that secure our economic prosperity.
Councillor Allen, your time has expired. Further questions?
Point of order.
Councillor Cassidy.
Point of order to you councillor Johnson. Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I just refer to your decision a minute or two ago to, and I quote, skip over the agenda item listed, which was the public speaker, who I acknowledge did speak earlier today. I just note that the meeting's local law require you to proceed with the order of business as listed in the agenda and it is mandatory. It says 11/1, council must proceed.
Point of order, Mr Chair. The question is very important. Just a minute councillor, I want to let her finish.
Thanks. So there is a procedure there for amending the agenda and I believe that you should have undertaken a motion to amend the agenda in accordance with section 11 of the meeting's local law. So can you advise why you didn't do that?
Councillor Johnson, I took a logic path, my apologies for that. The public speaker had already spoken. I don't believe there's any value in moving an amendment to the agenda for the purposes of addressing an issue that's always already been attended to.
So point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
So you're saying that you've...
I'll take the point of order.
Well, how about the interjection from councillor Murphy first?
Councillor.
Please, no interjections. Councillor Murphy, please, no interjections.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, I know that you are obligated to comply with the meeting's local law here today and you don't have any discretion to just skip those rules that you don't like. And I would just ask that you reflect on the fact that skipping the rules is not something that a chairman should be doing. It's your job, both under COBA and the meeting's local law, to make sure the rules are enforced and adhered to. So I appreciate...
Thank you councillor Johnson. There's enough there for me to make a ruling. You asked me to reflect on your comments. My reflection is that we have dealt with this issue. If there have been, there are circumstances where a public speaker has not turned up and we have moved on with the agenda. Lord Mayor, point of order.
Yeah, point of order. The meeting's local law gives me the ability to change the agenda, so given that the public speaker has already spoken, I move that we proceed with question time.
Seconded.
We have a motion from the Lord Mayor to proceed with question time as we started. All in favour of that motion, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, I was calling you. Excuse me, enough. Councillor Cassidy, you have the floor.
Well, thanks. Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, at a recent public meeting in Banyo about the Nudgee Recreation Reserve project, councillor Adam Allen admitted that funding for the elements you had cut from the project, like a dog park, BMX track, walking paths and lighting, was only approved a couple of weeks ago after public pressure. Now, this is despite the local LNP councillor claiming that it was funded all along. Lord Mayor, why does it take hundreds of residents petitioning, media pressure and public meetings for you to simply keep your word to those residents?
Lord Mayor.
Yes, that question is an interesting one, one that unfortunately is not based on a great deal of fact. And look, we have consistently and repeatedly said that we are 100% committed to delivering all of the aspects of that upgrade that we put out there. And what will simply happen is that they will be done in stages, given the obvious funding constraints that are pressuring every single project across every single level of government at the moment and the cost pressures that are facing us. Now, you open the newspaper every day at the moment and you see stories like a particular state government project has increased in cost, a federal government project has increased in cost, building companies have fallen over, construction companies have fallen over, the cost of living is going up significantly. So it would only be a Labour team that would think that you don't have to make adjustments in these challenging times, because even their state Labour colleagues are making adjustments to projects. They're making adjustments to projects and to budgets. And so we have been really upfront with the local residents around the Nudgee Rec Reserve that we will deliver these upgrades, but we will have to do it in stages based on the current cost pressures that the project is under and that so many projects at all levels of government are under. Now, councillor Cassidy, I understand you're just playing politics with this issue and I see exactly why you're doing that. It's really disappointing to bolster, you know, what you see as your political chances, but the reality is we will deliver for local residents, just like we consistently deliver across the suburbs. Now, things may take a little bit longer than we had hoped and at the moment, some things will cost more than we had anticipated, but that is not a problem that is unique to Brisbane City Council. It is in fact being faced by all levels of government and the private sector who are building things at the moment as well are facing the same things. And in fact, the mum and dads that are investing in their homes at the moment are facing exactly the same problems. People, whether they're doing a minor home improvement or a major building project, are facing massive challenges. And so I would simply say councillor Cassidy, we will deliver what we have said. It is going to cost more than we anticipated. We will do it in stages, but we will deliver.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shriner Council's Brisbane Metro project is working to its construction phase with plenty of progress being made. Can you please update the chamber on the status of the metro project, including what works are coming up?
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Huang for the question. Well, the award-winning Brisbane Metro, as we know, Chair, is council's most critical project. It is a $1.7 billion investment that will provide capacity in the city's transport network and revolutionise the way we move around Brisbane. It will help ease critical bottlenecks within Brisbane's existing bus network while offering the potential for huge expansion into the future. And as this massive project starts to take shape, we are now working at over 10 construction sites across the city, developing our station upgrades, building our charging infrastructure and unpacking our vehicle depot. And just last month, we kicked off works at the Buranda Busway Station where we are lengthening the platforms by over 20 metres. This will not only allow room for our longer metro vehicles, but will also provide more space for commuters and other buses at a station that has reached capacity. We recognise that these works have created some disruption to the road network and I want to thank residents and commuters for their patience while we deliver these critical public transport upgrades. We have heard residents' feedback and we have optimised traffic signals in the area to improve traffic flows and we've increased the amount of signage in and around Ipswich Road to ensure that motorists have as much warning as possible. Importantly though, without these works, transport modelling indicates that in the morning peak, up to 10,400 public transport users per hour would be impacted by metro and bus delays and this number would increase up to 17,400 passengers by 2041. We're also under construction at the UQ Lakes Station, where we're currently there constructing a new third platform. Next year, we will start to transform the existing platforms, including installing end-of-trip charging infrastructure there. As one of the largest patriche generators in our network, in fact, UQ is the second-largest trip generator outside the CBD, the improvements at UQ Lakes will be sure to provide great benefits for residents, visitors and students. The new cultural centre station is also taking place, which will not only provide improved public transport connectivity, but also an improved urban realm and streetscape for visitors to the heart of our city's cultural precinct. The temporary platforms were installed in August and have been performing extremely well, providing less congestion and quicker trips across Victoria Bridge. And it's great to see that the finished project will mimic this split outbound platform, which is currently in place. I've had many residents and regular public transport commuters come up to me and say, hey, you know the temporary platform that you've installed at Cultural Centre? Can we keep it? It's working that well, Chair, I think, which is always really good to see. Further south, we're continuing works at Metro Depot Roche St, which will be home to our fleet of 60 electric vehicles with room for 40 more. Earthworks have been underway for some time, we've almost hit a total of 100,000 cubic metres of material moved across that 10 hectare site. And soon, we will see the depot buildings start to take shape out of the ground. We've now poured the foundation for the administration building, 300 cubic metres of concrete, Mr Chair, which is enough to fit a 25-metre pool. And of course, one of the centrepieces of Brisbane Metro is the much discussed Adelaide Street Tunnel. The team have been hard at work preparing the tunnel portal, piling on either side of the tunnel entrance to support the commencement of tunneling in that chamber. Very shortly, we will begin tunneling underneath Adelaide Street, which will mark another major milestone in the project. Back on ground level at Adelaide Street, thousands of residents have been visiting the Brisbane Metro Information Centre as we've kicked off advertising Brisbane's new bus network across the city and the project is starting to really get ahead of steam out there in the community. I know that in particular, the centre has been a hit with kids, many of whom have asked their parents to come back time and time again. It must be those VR headset goggles that they love, Mr Chair. And just listen to some of this feedback. What a great legacy for us to leave with these young minds being inspired about the importance of transport as part of Brisbane's future. Now, with community consultation underway on Brisbane's new bus network, we know the Metro Information Centre will be a key hub with information sessions held every Tuesday from 11am to 1pm and again from 4pm to 6pm. Now, I can't finish without mentioning the jewel in the project's crown, the metro vehicle. Since its arrival in April this year, the Pilot Metro has already travelled over 15,000 kilometres, more than enough for two return trips to Perth. Of course, we know the public love the vehicle with great feedback from 12,000 residents who visited and toured through it at the airport, Chair.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
Are there further questions? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, we're once again confronted with reports of devastating abuse of our bus drivers. For years, we have called for full driver encapsulation on problem routes and this has been ignored by your LNP administration. Can you tell us how many Brisbane buses have full driver encapsulation today?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Another interesting question and one that has been covered and asked many times before, but unfortunately, they ask the questions and never actually listen or comprehend the answers. Now, when it came to the issue of bus driver safety, there are a number of different approaches that we have pursued to make our fleet safer and to make our bus operators safer. That includes things like placing a special film on the windows of the bus because some buses were being attacked with rocks being thrown at them. There was CCTV cameras installed in the entire bus fleet, which has been incredibly important in helping to respond to acts of abuse or violence. And also, some of the basic complaints that might come up, for example, with, I guess, what happened on a particular bus at a particular time or what happened at a particular stop at a particular time. That CCTV footage gives us all the evidence we need to make sure we go after, through the authorities, the perpetrators of this abuse. And I would point out that the CCTV cameras were opposed by the RTBU. When we first proposed putting them into the buses, they claimed it was a privacy issue for their bus operators. Now, this was all about making our buses safer for both the operators and passengers. And one of the other things we did is we trialled a number of different types of barriers. Now, we have 1,200 buses in the fleet and to retrofit an entire fleet is a big process and we wanted to make sure that when we looked at the options that were commercially available on the market, that we assessed those options thoroughly. And so we ran a trial of different types of barriers and we got the drivers' feedback on those barriers and the barriers that they preferred have now been rolled out across the fleet. Those barriers are in place on the fleet because we asked the drivers for their view and their feedback, we got them trialled on the road so the drivers can see what it was like in an operating environment. And it was interesting to hear the feedback. You know, there is far from a sort of 100% view on this matter amongst the drivers themselves. There are some drivers who have made complaints that barriers cause issues with reflection and it makes it difficult for them to... and it makes it difficult for them to see what they need to see from their seat. There are other drivers who believe that it interferes with their interaction with the passenger and that one of the best things that the drivers have in relation to, I guess, their own safety is the fact that the vast majority of people in Brisbane love their work, appreciate them and always want to say, thank you, driver. And a lot of these...
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Strunk?
Yes, I've been listening intently to what the Lord Mayor's been saying in regards to my question. But my question was specifically about how many buses in the Brisbane fleet are, have fully encapsulated driver spaces? And that was my question. And he's not answered that at this stage.
Well, I think the question goes to the issue of bus driver safety and the sorts of encapsulation that can be put into buses. And the Lord Mayor is answering that question. Lord Mayor?
And so the barriers that are in our buses were the ones that were supported by a significant group of bus drivers. That, that is the reality. And councillor Cassidy is interjecting that we didn't give the option of full encapsulation. Well, there is no commercially available full encapsulation on the market. As simple as that. There is, there is no commercially available...
Councillor Cassidy?
Full encapsulation on the market that can be easily retrofitted to buses.
Councillor Cassidy? Enough?
Well, councillor Cassidy, I'll take that interjection. They've got him in Perth. It's a cage. If you want our drivers to be like a bird behind a cage, that's a poor outcome. That is a cage, and I can tell you, in the case of Perth...
Councillor Cassidy?
In the case of Perth, people are spitting through the cage at the drivers. So not even the cages, not even the cages in Perth are getting the desired outcome. But I can tell you, putting our drivers behind a cage is not something that I think is a good outcome. Because in the end, I want to point out a couple of things. We have committed that when we enter a new bus building contract, that we will ask the bus builders who tender to put forward as part of their proposal, options for full encapsulation. So that it is designed with the vehicle itself from the day one, when the vehicle rolls off the production line, just like we have done with Brisbane Metro. The metro vehicle has a full driver compartment. It's been designed that way.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Landers?
My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the last year has been a huge year of project delivery for Brisbane's North Side. Could you please update the chamber on some of the projects which the Shruna Council has delivered on the North Side, including the completed Norris Road upgrade in Brackenridge, as well as others under construction?
Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I always note that councillor Landers asks these questions. It's one of those things, I'm sure she enjoys hearing how much is delivered for her own community. And can I thank her for the question and her keen and ongoing interest? I also have to note that tonight's a very important night because the federal government's considering funding arrangements going into the future. And many of the projects I'm going to be mentioning in this answer were brought about because of the federal government's support through the Urban Congestion Fund, something I've brought up a lot of times in this place. And once again, a call on the federal government to continue the project. We had a discussion in committee this morning that while some local government jurisdictions did not do their UCF projects justice, we in BCC did, and it has made a material difference to people here in this city. So can I say, one of the first things I want to say is when it comes to road projects on the North Side and considering the time of year it is, there are no tricks, all treats for Northsiders when it comes to our road delivery, our road project delivery. And councillor Landers well knows that. As I've said in the past, they may, they may call it the Brisbane Infrastructure Division, but deep in its heart, we're the Brackenridge Infrastructure Division. And it can only, can, and it can only be properly recognised with only earlier this month, if memory serves, the 7th of October, the lights were turned on at the new set of, the new set of lights, the new intersection at the corner of Pritchard Street and Norris Road in Brackenridge. The most recent of a whole series of roadworks right across the North Side that have meant that our roads are safer and more efficient, that people are getting home sooner and safer to be able to enjoy their, the things that they most enjoy, but also to be able to get to work when they need. And I think there's a part of this discussion that often gets missed. Often when I talk about the virtue of road projects, it's often lost on people that buses travel on roads. And it seems to be lost on people, that congruity, that to have buses operate properly, there has to be a proper road project. And for example, the Norris-Pritchard project includes pure indented bus bays for a safer and more efficient bus service through Norris Road. And, and the Mogal Road Corridor, which the interjection from councillor Murphy rightly identifies, the Mogal Road Corridor will have a series of bus indent bays to make sure that you can ride on our public transport system in a safer and more efficient and more time-consistent way. And that's one of the things that we're also able to do through these projects. So if I can stay on Norris Road, so the question was very broad and allowed me to, an opportunity to discuss a whole range of projects. Let's just stay in Norris Road because it's a great road. It's got Coles on it. It's got a Coles and it's got a Macca's on it, if you've ever been there as well. So it's a key, it's a key connecting road between Brackenridge Road and Telegraph Road. Telegraph Road bring the principal connector across that, that part of the city. Where now, through there, we've done Norris Barber, which I've talked about in glowing terms. It was a conversion of a roundabout to a satellite, a great project. Norris-Pritchard, we've done that. It included indented bus bays, improved safety for pedestrians because now they have a protected signalised crossing at that station, at that particular intersection. The zebra crossing location has been turned into an ordinary pedestrian crossing, an ordinary protected crossing. And a nearby intersection has a traffic light controlled crossing for pedestrians for both Norris Road State School and the nearby Brackenridge Tafe. So those things make it safer. I haven't even finished on Norris Road. We've still got time to go on Norris Road. So if we keep going up Norris Road, there's also the intersection upgrade to the Norris Road-Gawain Street intersection, which will allow for better throughput of the traffic through there and allow for a safe and protected turn for those people turning right into Gawain. Gawain, I should say. There's the staying, I'll move on to another ward just to prove we do work in other places. And can I say that the Murphy Road-Ellison Road upgrade in Marchant Ward is well advanced? We have, the project has been, the consultation is ongoing and we're working on just filing off some measures, working with councillor Hammond about that. But that again, it services the northern end of Marchant Park. It services, I want to say, which Girl Guides is it, councillor Hammond? Ashley Girl Guides. And to make sure that people can access these places sooner and safer, making it all the more efficient. Can I? Well, there's, I got an interjection from one of my favourites, councillor Strunk. He knows full well that something like four new sets of lights are coming his way. This is coming for an interview. He knows that. That's why he wanted, that's why he did that interjection. He knows full well that we look after Forest Lake just about as good as we look after Brackenridge Ward.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Sri Ranganathan?
Thanks, Chair. My question is to councillor Davis. Since the February 2022 floods, the West End Dog Off Leash area on Riverside Drive near Hocking Street still hasn't been repaired. It still hasn't been cleaned. It hasn't been reopened. I understand there's some conflict between the council and the state government about whose land it is and who's responsible for the clean-up. But at the end of the day, it's part of a broader Brisbane City Council park and it's a significant eyesore. The Dog Off Leash area also has one metre high piles of river mud that still haven't been cleaned up. They've been left there since February. I guess my question to you is, what steps are you taking to ensure that that amenity and health and safety issue is addressed? And, and to create, is your plan to reopen that Dog Off Leash area? Or are you going to create a new Dog Off Leash area nearby?
Councillor Davis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, thank councillor Sri Ranganathan. The state is the owner of that particular property, so there's no confusion about that. Council officers are looking for other opportunities for a Dog Off Leash area in and around your ward. And that will, that will continue. With regards to the clean-up, that is all part of the post-flood work that's being done. But I don't have a definitive answer as to a location, but can assure you that that is being looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the acting Chair of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee. Councillor Hutton, last Friday night was the annual Lord Mayor's Business Awards in City Hall. Can you please update the chamber on the successful winners from that evening?
Councillor Hutton, sorry.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Hammond for the question. The Lord Mayor's Business Awards brings together Brisbane's leading innovators and entrepreneurs to celebrate their achievements and showcase the incredible talent we have right here in Brisbane. It is certainly a night not to be missed. In a record-breaking year, the awards received the highest number of nominations in its 17-year history, a sign of post-pandemic optimism and growing confidence in our local business community. Across the 11 award categories, there were so many inspiring and groundbreaking success stories, from businesses improving lives through the healthcare and innovation sector and increasing accessibility to those driving growth and jobs in our arts, culture and sports economies. Stories of adaptation and success in the face of adversity. Stories of world firsts and life-changing innovation, only cementing Brisbane's reputation as the most small business-friendly city in Australia. And we're taking it global. As we prepare for a decade-long runway towards 2032, opportunity is abundant and the momentum is unstoppable. But more importantly, it's the passion and drive behind these businesses and the courage to do things differently that makes Brisbane business community so special. Our awards, our award winners share a vision for the future and a passion for their cause to push the limits and pave the way for new successes. They're backing Brisbane and investing back into our city, creating new jobs and helping grow our $181 billion economy. From this year's entries, there was a clear theme that emerged amongst the winners, healthcare innovation and medical technology. Brisbane has quickly gained a solid reputation in this space with our world-class education and health facilities, creating the perfect environment for some of the best and brightest to do what they do best, create and innovate. From needle-free patches to improved vaccine access to specialist headphones for hearing impaired, it's this kind of pioneering research and innovation that will go on to make global impact and help millions of people. Across the 11 award categories, we pay tribute to 34 outstanding businesses and eight business people who were named in the finalists, with nine companies and three business people taking out the awards. And I'd like to run through some of the amazing and talented winners we had. Dr. James Fielding, CEO of Adira, was named both the Port of Brisbane's Young Person of the Year and received CCIQ's Outstanding Small Business Award for his life-changing audio technology for people with hearing impairment. A truly inspiring story and deserving winner in this space. Vaxis, now a household name, claimed the Accenture Australia Award for product innovation, for developing revolutionary ways in which vaccines are delivered with a needleless patch technology. Meanwhile, winners from the Urban Utilities Award for Environmental Sustainability in Business, Save Our Supplies, has salvaged millions of dollars in medical waste by shipping usable items to countries in need. Winners using technology to improve lives included Zero's outstanding micro-business, Kido, which supports over 18,000 parents to find trusted care for their children with its smart app. SimPro, which took out the ANZ Award for High Growth Businesses as well as the Optus Enterprise Platinum Awards, now employs more than 480 staff and has grown their customer base to over 200,000 users around the world with its cloud-based projects streamlining software. Leading stadium designers, Populous, took out HSBC's Award for Excellence in International Business and the Australian Pacific LNG Award for Business Innovation went to the Double Take Sports as leading providers in digital-first broadcasting technology. John Stoddard of Stoddard Group received Brisbane's Lifetime Achievement Award for his dedication and contribution to the residential home building and construction industry right here in Queensland. Meanwhile, Australian Spatial Analytics took out the Outstanding Social Enterprise category for the fantastic work they do in championing neurodiversity in workplaces by recruiting young people with autism in jobs where their talents can shine. The redevelopment of the Princess Theatre took out the awards for investing in Brisbane, investment in Brisbane, sorry, giving new life to one of Brisbane's most historic and cherished live music venues and music and entertainment venues. At last, but not least, Elena Goss, CEO of AIS Water, was named as Career Mail's Business Person of the Year for growing her business innovation and manufacturing operations to export to 55 countries around the world. I would like to give a huge thank you to the BEAT A team, in particular Nikki Reid, for putting on this amazing event and to the sponsors...
Councillor Hutton, sorry, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy?
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, recent focus group research by council into people's views on your Living in Brisbane newsletter shows the least popular and least worthwhile part of that newsletter to residents was the Lord Mayor's message. Criticism of your politicisation of this publicly-funded newsletter doesn't end with Labor councillors. It's now clear the residents of Brisbane agree. So, Lord Mayor, will you bow to public pressure and stop using Living in Brisbane to promote yourself and replace it with something useful?
Lord Mayor? No? Thank you. Further, further questions? Councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shruna Council's commitment to the access and inclusion remains front and centre of our agenda for this city. Can you please update the chamber on some of the recent deliverables in this body of work?
Councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Chair. And through you, can I thank councillor Toomey for his interest in this ongoing programme? And it really is a great question, as ensuring that everyone can access and enjoy the community facilities across our network, whether they are our pools, libraries or sporting facilities, is just so important. Approximately 20% of the residents of Brisbane live with a disability. So it's important that works are undertaken to ensure that all residents can access and experience the great community facilities across our city. The Shruna Council is very understanding of this, which is why across council, works are always underway to ensure that Brisbane is a more safe, accessible and inclusive city for people of all abilities. In 2011, council launched its Access and Inclusion Plan to have an integrated whole-of-council approach to provide better accessibility and inclusiveness outcomes across Brisbane for our residents. A significant amount of work has taken place across Brisbane since 2011, with council having invested close to $270 million into accessibility enhancements of our transport, services and facilities network. A key mechanism by which these works are undertaken is through Service 5.4.1.3, Inclusive Brisbane Plan Implementation, which has seen more than $35 million being spent to make our community facilities more accessible and available for all residents to enjoy. With regard to community facilities, typical accessible infrastructure includes work such as creating accessible car parking bays and safe drop-off zones, step-free access paths and improved building entrances, accessible and ambulance toilets and ramps, and improvements to general circulation to and from a building or facility. With this in mind, it gives me great pleasure to update the chamber on some of the recent accessibility upgrades that have taken place across Brisbane. In Aljester, we've recently seen the completion of upgrades to the Aljester Scouts and Guides facilities, delivering new accessibility enhancements, including an accessible car park, new access ramps, improved entrances to and from the facility and new ambulance toilets on-site. These new facility upgrades totaling close to $600,000 in investment is an example of the Shruna Council's ongoing investment into our community facilities. These upgrades ensure that our community hubs across Brisbane are accessible to residents across, across the city, regardless of ability, allowing LSEs to have spaces that are more welcoming to all members of the community. In Anali, works have also been completed through the Inclusive Brisbane Plan Implementation Project to ensure that previous accessibility enhancements continue to benefit the Brisbane Bridge Centre and the community. Works to replace the existing lift on-site were undertaken to complement previous accessibility enhancements completed on-site, which included the installation of Unisex Accessible Toilets and better access to and from the facility from both the car park and the principal pedestrian entrance. Through this service line, we have also seen the recent completion of an accessibility upgrade at non-community leased sites across the city, including the upgrade of the Kangaroo Point Cliffs Park toilet block. And these works had been undertaken to ensure that the amenities within the vicinity are accessible to all visitors to the area and included the construction of an accessible Unisex Cubicle, creation of... unisex cubicle, creation of a single accessible parking bay and shared zone, resurfacing of the accessible car park, and the construction of a new pathway from the accessible car park to the toilet block. In terms of accessibility upgrades that are soon to be ready for the public, accessibility upgrades are nearing completion or underway at the Sangate and Corinda Bowls Club and also at the Langlands Memorial Pool. At the Corinda Bowls Club, accessibility upgrades will see a range of improvements undertaken at the facility, including the installation of accessible car parking spaces, new access paths and ramps to and from the bowling greens, the installation of new ambulance toilets in both male and female bathrooms, and new accessible stairs and accessible greenskeeper machinery. In addition, the accessibility work scheduled for the Langlands Parks Memorial Pool will also ensure greater access and inclusion outcomes for all visitors to the facility. These are just a few examples of the types of work that have been undertaken across our community facilities networks, with more than 50 accessibility projects being delivered since 2018. These upgrades to our community facilities are just so important as they reduce discrimination by providing people with a disability an equitable experience and access to community spaces and activities. In addition, it allows our community lessies and operators.
councillor Howard, your time has expired. That ends question time for today. councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
councillor Landers has moved a motion for a dinner break, seconded by councillor Hutton, that we adjourn for an hour for a dinner break. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you councillors, we'll see you back here in approximately one hour.
Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of 5 September 2022, please.
I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 5th of September 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
To be moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 5 September 2022 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move on to the items in front of us, I wanted to just touch again on the issue of the Najee Rec Reserve. It's interesting because almost every week in council, I get a question, and the opposition leader or whoever asked the question rarely listens to the answer, and then they keep perpetuating whatever rubbish was in the question, even though it's been proven to be incorrect. And it seems this has happened again, because the question that was asked of me just earlier is the same question that councillor Cassidy asked of councillor Adam Allen at a public meeting the other day. And councillor Cassidy was kind enough to give councillor Allen the microphone, where he got the opportunity to address residents and counter the misinformation that had been provided. So, the question that councillor Cassidy asked me is the same question that was asked of councillor Allen at a public rally. Well, a public rally. And councillor Allen confirmed with you what I had said before, but added further detail in fact. So, he confirmed that we had had to adjust our approach on this particular project due to funding constraints. We put in a modified SCP, you'll remember when that came through, but we had always indicated that we would delever the project as and when the funding became available in stages, and that we intended to deliver all stages and all components of the project. Well, the process has now progressed, and as we know, in December 2021, when the amended SCP was brought to the chamber, it was clear that the four items remaining in the scope of the project but were subject to funding being available. There was approximately $700,000 in funding that needed to be found extra over and above what had been budgeted. Now, since that time, we've been working towards securing that additional funding, and this has in fact occurred, and all items in the scope have now been funded. So, yes, the project is being delivered in stages, but the stages are occurring as quickly as we can get them to occur. So, this particular funding allocation went through stores board on the 4th of October, and we're getting underway with the project. So, all of those elements that were part of the original project are being delivered. That's what we said would happen, and that is exactly what is happening. And I want to commend councillor Adam Allen for his commitment to being sensible and responsible, but also his passion for delivering for his local residents. And so, a good outcome has been achieved there. And once again, as we said we would do, we are delivering for residents in the suburbs, which is why 68% of all budget funding goes to the suburbs. Sorry, 86, I get that wrong. It's one of those things. You know what, 68 would be good, but 86 would be better, and we're delivering 86% of funding to the suburbs. Sorry? So, 86%. And so, this is one of those projects which will be going ahead in full, as we promised, and one of many investments in our parklands and suburbs across the city. Moving on to the items in front of us. Item A is the Stores Board submission, which is an amendment to three significant contracting plans. As I've already referred to a number of times in this meeting and the one before, we're under significant cost pressures on a range of different projects. Now, some people may choose to try and play politics with that, but I'm sorry, we don't control the price of fuel, we don't control the price of bitumen, we don't control the price of steel, we don't control the price of concrete, and a whole range of other supplies. That changes based on a whole range of factors beyond our control. And we don't control the price of bitumen, which has gone from $1,200 a tonne in April 2021 to nearly $1,600 a tonne in July this year, and diesel that has increased by more than 50% now, sitting at more than $2 a litre. And so, all of these things are putting pressure on many projects, and as a result, we've had to make amendments to some SCPs in light of this. And so, these SCPs that will have amendments made to them is the Gresham Street Bridge, which is thankfully now complete, drove past it and over it just the other day, fantastic project. Great bridge, and one that will create more flood resilience for that community, a safer passage, better access for people on foot and on bike or on scooter. Also, the Smoother Suburban Streets Programme, which is obviously underway, is having some adjustments made to it based on changes in things such as the price of bitumen, and the Rochdale and Priestell Road intersection upgrade, which is also underway. So, that's item A. Item B is the presentation and tabling of the audited consolidated financial statements. And these statements have been audited by the Auditor General. As you know, that Auditor General is part of a state agency, and I also table these documents as well. Thank you. Is that one? And that one. Thank you. I've tabled the consolidated financial statements and the Auditor General's report for the year ended 30th of June 2022, the current year financial sustainability statement and the Auditor General's audit report for the year ended 30th of June 2022, and also the long-term financial sustainability statement as prepared at 30th of June 2022. This is something that we've done each and every year. Once again, we've demonstrated our strong and responsible financial management despite some of the most challenging circumstances that we have seen in many decades. Not only the impact of a pandemic which has run on for a long time, but also one of the most costly and devastating natural disasters, the flood earlier this year, and added to that record inflation, which is affecting everyone in the community, skill shortage, and a whole range of challenges that have come along that are particularly unusual but have all happened in recent times. And so, to have such a positive outcome under such difficult circumstances is a credit to this council and a credit to the way that particularly our corporate finance branch has assisted us in making sure that we always put responsible financial management first. The statements highlight a number of impacts to council, including over $4.3 million in rates relief for the financial year, lower parking fees due to parking meters being switched off as part of our economic, sorry, Omnicrom or COVID response package, which included $4 million in foregone parking fee revenue, includes materials and services costs of $46.2 million, and a range of other impacts which have obviously impacted on the council budget. Item C is the Contracts and Tendering Report for July 2022. Contracts include design and construction for the first wave of upgrades and improvements to Victoria Park, including park shelters, seating, barbecues and bike racks for Victoria Park, that builds on the work that's been done on pathways and a range of other improvements. And Victoria Park Barambin is, you know, open for the community to use, and we will continue to improve and upgrade that wonderful green asset as we progress with the master plan. That master plan is now in draft, consultation occurs during the month of October, and then we can proceed with the staged upgrade of that green space. The other contract I wanted to mention is a new pedestrian bridge at Newham Road and Wecker Road that complements the intersection upgrade that was recently carried out at that location. Also, a separate one for the supply and delivery of new protective coating spans, five to seven for the southern end of Story Bridge as part of that restoration project. And finally, service relocations to allow the Beams Road upgrade to go ahead. Item D, did someone say woo-hoo?
Yes.
Let me guess. Item D is the TLPI or Temporary Local Planning Instrument for the Maruka Wall Workers' Housing Estate. This has been discussed many times in the chamber before, I think it has the support of all councillors, and this is the final stage in that process, so I won't dwell on that, that's a good outcome. Item E is the Proposed Events Local Law 2022, and this replaces the Entertainment Venues and Events Local Law 1999, and also the Entertainment Venues and Events Local Law Policy 1999. The new local law removes the requirement for entertainment venues to hold a permit. This will reduce red tape and prevent dual regulation of venues that are regulated by a range of other state legislation. And so, we are finding that.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
May for an extension.
Seconded.
An extension of time for the Lord Mayor is being moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We're finding that in some cases there was overregulation of some venues because they required various state permits and approvals, but then also council permits and approvals for the same use. And so, we're trying to reduce that red tape burden and make a more sensible outcome that facilitates what we want to see happening when it comes to a city that has great entertainment venues, great events, and the community can access those freely. We've introduced a self-accessible events system that will enable council to direct resources to activities of higher risk. And so, one of the important things here is that we have so many events happening on, whether it might be council parks or in council parks, supported in council venues and facilities. There are so many events happening, and some of these are large, some of these are small, and we've made some of the smaller, lower-risk events self-accessible. And that's been done very deliberately to help people create new events and to support new events, and for those new events to get established and grow. Obviously, when they reach a threshold and become larger events, there's a need for a higher level of assessment and a permit to be obtained, but for the smaller events, we want to support them, we want to get out of their way and encourage them to grow and prosper in a city where people love attending festivals and events. Customers will be able to apply for a single permit for an event, such as a one-off event like the Tenerife Festival, or customers will be able to apply for a multiple event permit, where a particular organisation is holding multiple events throughout the year, and we all know cases of where that might have occurred. Public consultation on these changes will occur on the 31st of October until the 25th of November, followed by Queensland Government consultation, and based on that, we'll also be advertising in, both on the council website and in the Courier-Mail for public submissions. Item F is the major amendment to the Brisbane City Plan 2024, it's Package K. This amendment has a number of changes, particularly relating to zoning, overlays, industry changes and heritage. Public consultation on the package was carried out between 12th of July and the 23rd of August, but there was a two-week extension to this period due to a COVID lockdown. In this package, there are 54 lots which are being converted from emerging communities to low-density residential. That's better to reflect the surrounding development and area, so that those blocks or lots fit into the surrounding area in a more complementary way. Additionally, 75 properties are being rezoned to either conservation or open space, and this is as a result of council buying these properties through the Bushland Acquisition Programme or Parks Acquisition Programme, which will see them rezoned for their purpose and protected forever for the future. There are also some changes to overlays as well, including the addition of significant landscape tree overlay to reflect recent VPOs that have been approved by council. And so, once again, a positive submission and change proposed to the city plan. Item G is the Stores Board submission to amend the Significant Contracted Plan for the Construction of Dockside and Mowbray Park Ferry Terminals. We've been progressively upgrading ferry terminal infrastructure and also repairing ferry terminal infrastructure following the flood. Dockside and Mowbray Park are the next two terminals in our upgrade programme, and we've been working through the tender process for these terminals. We've been engaging with the Dockside Body Corporate to finalise a service easement essential to this construction works, and that has been unfortunately a process that has taken a little bit longer than we would have liked, but a necessary and important process. We've now secured this easement with the agreement of the Body Corporate, so that allows us to get going. So, the great news is the Dockside Terminal will be returned to our network, and we're keen to commence the work as soon as possible. Now that we've secured the easement, the next step is to award the contract to the successful tenderer and get cracking on the project. The SCP also factors in a number of cost increases due to the market price of steel and aluminium, both of which are central to the terminal construction. Item H is the First Budget Review, and we're seeing a number of changes that reflect the current financial situation that council is facing. So, that includes impacts of, the ongoing impacts of the floods and the pandemic. It includes project delivery impacts associated with labour availability, wet weather, that has occurred in record amounts of time this year, and impacts from supply chain disruptions around the world as well, that include a whole range of factors, including the inflationary pressures we're feeling, the impacts of conflict in Eastern Europe, and a whole range of other things that are affecting all of us. We see, however, that there is an overall increase in expenses of $25.1 million, including some continued flood recovery projects, and the capital spend is also projected to increase by $61.5 million. But however, $50 million of that relates to the Flood Resilient Suburbs Programme, which is revenue from the state government associated with that state and federal programme. That'll involve us purchasing homes through the flood buyback programme, so that's been an ejection of revenue into the budget, but obviously that will be spent on the purpose that it is intended for. There will be, obviously, we expect additional funding coming in through that as well. Now, item I is the Annual Report for 2021/22. The Annual Report is obviously, you know, an interesting summary of all of the things that are happening across council, across this incredibly large and diverse organisation that delivers so many positive things for our community. It tracks the progress on a whole range of issues, and it is once again a great example and a great, I guess, compiled document of all of the things that have been achieved in the past 12 months. Finally, item J is the Delegation of Council Powers, and this is simply about streamlining council's process in applying for grant funding. Now, specifically, this deals with funding available from the Queensland Reconstruction Authority following the floods. The process. The process of the reimbursement of council costs in responding to floods is dynamic and requires a delegation change to support this happening quickly and efficiently. In the coming weeks and months, there will continue to be a significant number of claims made, and this delegation helps support that happening in a speedy manner so that we can maximise the funding that is available from agencies such as QRA, the Queensland Reconstruction Authority, and get that money working for the good of the people of Brisbane. This particular delegation does not include applications made under Category C and D, where the delegation will remain with elected councillors through ENC. The submission also deals with a change to our tiered grants procedure whereby delegation limits will take into account the financial impact on council rather than just the raw quantum of the funding being sought. So that, Mr Chair, is the final item in this suite of submissions.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just at the outset, can I ask for a few items to be taken. Series item four, voting please. A, D, E, and I together.
A, D, E, and I together.
Then C, F, and G together.
C, F, and G together.
Which leaves B, H, and J together.
Just for voting.
Just for voting, thanks.
Thank you.
Just starting from the top, the Stores Board Submission and the Amendment to Those Significant Contracting Plans. There's those three, as mentioned, Gresham Street Bridge, Ridgestyle Road in section, and the smoother suburban streets programme. No surprise that the Gresham Street Plan is being amended. It had to be, obviously, because it was one of the several projects that was facing delay under this administration, and projects like safer school infrastructure and the Norris Road project were all delayed. So obviously, while this meeting has been delayed by six or seven weeks, we're dealing with delays of projects that go back months and months because of this administration's poor, poor planning and poor execution of suburban projects. And it's quite clear that this LMP administration has taken its eyes off the suburbs of Brisbane. These projects that are critical for addressing congestion in the suburbs of Brisbane are delayed, which then leads on to delays of other projects and cost blowouts in other projects, because we've heard from the Lord Mayor, there's all these other costs, the labour costs and inflationary costs and supply chain issues that are real now, that are affecting projects that should have been gotten on with much earlier if these projects were better managed by this administration. And it's happening right around the city, of course. You know, there's no drainage happening out in Hemington, the doughboy ward, and footpaths and pran ramps out at Stafford Heights being left by the wayside, no bus stops in Polara, and the administration, of course, cutting community facilities in Nudgy, in Banjo, the Nudgy Recreation Reserve, and then only, as we find out in the last couple of weeks, having to fund them, bowing to public pressure. So congratulations once again to that community for that work. The presentation of the tabling, the presentation and tabling the audited financial statements, the standard process here in tabling these statements, of course, the Lord Mayor went through what is, you know, his, his story of the budget, and, and of course, the Queensland Audit Office audits the bare bones information that this administration gives them in terms of what came in and what went out and what was borrowed, but it certainly doesn't talk about the priorities and the wrong priorities this administration has, and we'll get to some of those a bit later on. In Contracts and Tendering, this is another, another set of contracts which shows our suburbs being overlooked because of this administration's obsession with its inner-city prioritisation and inner-city spending. We see here that the administration is happy to spend $2 million on Victoria Park furniture, but won't put bus stops and footpaths out in Polara. This administration has approved a $300,000 contract for an event service to run citizenship ceremonies at City Hall because the Lord Mayor and his administration commercialised City Hall to the extent that you can't even run, as the council, the most civic event you can possibly think of, a citizenship ceremony, without paying a contractor that you engage to operate your public spaces. There's almost $1 million being spent on a professional conference organiser. You would think in the amount of people that this administration and this council employees, around 9,000 plus contractors, there'd be someone in council who could organise events, someone who could organise conferences. It's something, used to have a team to do that, of course, but now we've got a $1 million contract because there's not one single person in this organisation now can do that. Now, despite having a full team in the Olympic and Paralympic office, who are apparently capable of delivering an event of that scale, we don't have anyone that can organise a conference, so we need a $1 million spent on that. It's just, you know, these are, again, another example of how this administration's priorities are all wrong. Clause D, the Temporary Local Planning Instrument, something that we support, obviously, and councillor Griffiths has previously spoke on this, and this is the next stage of that coming through. And the Lord Mayor is a bit confused about this. We, of course, support the TLPI, and he and councillor Allen are under the impression that, that TLPI deals with the removal of heritage protection on the 180 to 200 homes identified in the Nathan Salisbury neighbourhood plan in the draft strategy that councillor Allen talked about earlier. They're two very separate things. This TLPI deals with the war, the war home estate, but the draft strategy talks about removing character protection and increasing density in small suburban streets by up to eight stories, a totally different thing. So of course, we are supportive of this and made it very clear at that public meeting of 350 residents, we're very supportive of them as well, despite the LMP not being. Clause E, the Proposed Events Local Law, we are supporting this, if it in fact, we hope it certainly does. You know, enter these things very carefully these days in, in trusting what the administration says, but it does appear to remove red tape for small businesses and community groups running events without having to jump through the same amount of hoops that they currently are. So it certainly looks like it'll solve some of that issue, but they're not really putting, the administration's not really putting any more resources into it, into supporting those kinds of things, not seeing increases in, in funding for community groups running events, increases to discretionary and grant funding for community events, and we don't see the business support team growing to support that community in Brisbane. So we support this because it removes one element of red tape, but there's so much more that can be done to support these special and unique events around Brisbane. The Stores Board Submission for Docklands and Mowbray Park Ferry Terminals. So this approved contracting plan now estimated total expenditure on this work is an almost $15 million increase. That's a 50% increase on this, which is a really eye-watering amount when you think about these projects should have been planned properly with a team in council that can do that work, you know, can engineer these things and plan these things out properly and get on with this work. We've seen recently, and continue to see in the media, that around one-third of Brisbane's city ferry terminals still remain shut after the February 2022 floods. You know, there's just no real urgency when it comes to this administration and public transport infrastructure. Those ferry terminals are going to remain closed into next year. We've got delays on the Docklands and Mowbray Park ferry terminals, and the Lord Mayor's always got a million excuses for why these things happen, just like the million excuses as to, you know, why an emergency alert didn't go out. But none of them, he never apologises, and none of them are ever sheeted home to his administration in their poor management of these projects. And I suppose this is evidence of what happens when you take your eye off the ball. Clause H is the Budget, First Budget Review, and as we predicted, the Budget Review was going to be just two pages, or two and a half, I guess, and these, this is the issue we raised at budget time around the lack of information that would be coming to council. Yeah, what a surprise. They said, no, 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 it's all fine, we'll still get budget reviews. They said that was, the LMP said, no, of course, you know, don't, don't scaremonger about not getting all of the details when it comes. Well, what, what we get are just headline figures. And it's our job to ensure that our constituents, our residents, the people we represent are represented well in here, and we are informed in making decisions on their behalf. They elect us and send us here, and we get paid a significant amount of money to do that. But the approach this administration has now taken is to give the least amount of information that they possibly can, so the least amount of questions can be asked. The Lord Mayor said there's been a $35 million blowout in his budget in the first quarter alone. There was 61 million in capital, 50 million of that is, of course, for the flood buybacks, but there's also a $25 million increase in expense. So there's over a $35 million blowout in this budget, but none of this information is contained in the papers before us today, and that's by design. That's the way the LMP administration wanted it, so that councillors couldn't have access to information, so they couldn't talk to residents in their wards about the kinds of decisions that this administration is making and why their rates are going up, but they're getting less out in the suburbs, and there is no explanation for that anymore.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. I would like to make an extension, thank you.
Thank you.
An extension of time has been moved for councillor Cassidy by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Cumming. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair, thanks to the chamber and to my colleagues, of course. So we hope that, we hope, you know, we live in hope that this report card of the first quarter of the 2022-23 budget is a whole lot better than the final quarter for the 21-22 budget, where we saw not one single programme immune from incompetence, cuts, delays, and that city-centric approach of the LMP administration. There was $23 million in variance in stormwater infrastructure, a massive underspend in flood prevention, $10 million not spent on waste reduction, $17 million not spent on maintaining council facilities. We know why that is, is because this LMP administration is contracting everything out but can't secure contractors to do that work. Rates are going up, but services are going down in the suburbs. Now, we know that from the previous one because that was itemised, and I wonder why, after all those years of all those delays, all those cuts and all those carryovers being reflected each and every quarter in those budget reviews, why this administration finally bit the bullet and said, we just don't want to talk about that anymore. So all of those things, all of those carryovers, we know there were tens of millions of dollars in delayed projects and carryovers into this first quarter, but none of that is reflected in this budget review before us today. There is no accountability and no transparency anymore in this administration, and to, to the extent, it's not just a decision that the Lord Mayor took at budget time to ensure that future budget reviews are kept secret, but it's also obviously a case the Lord Mayor is trying to hide that embarrassment at all levels, because I did a request for record recently asking for the list of project schedules. We're often told, we're often told as councillors that things might be investigated as a project, and they warrant funding, it might be a drainage upgrade, it might be traffic calming, it might be a road upgrade or a congestion project or something like that. We're told that those things will be listed for funding, they'll be put on those schedules listed for funding, and we would have to await the Lord Mayor's future budget to see if those items were funded. Well, that no longer forms the schedule, the Suburban Works Programme no longer forms part of the budget itself, it's just an addendum. So I asked for a list of those project schedules which have been funded, including details but not limited to the relevant schedule number, ward category, work details, costings, and relevant budget programme. And the response I got was that it's budget in confidence and therefore cannot be released. And the only person that can determine that is the Lord Mayor of Brisbane. So he won't allow councillors who have been elected by the people of Brisbane, who are supposed to be making budget submissions to him each year for projects that we want to see funded. We don't see that information that's held internally in council anymore, so we can't make an informed submission apart from information we gather ourselves, and we can't see at budget time or throughout the year when these budget reviews come, decisions that are being made at a political level by this administration on how people's money's being spent out in the suburbs anymore. So I think, you know, after 20 long years in administration, time is definitely up for the LMP here in Brisbane. I think people are realising when they see, when they see how their councillors operate, when they see, you know, whether it was at that meeting out at the Nudgy Rec Reserve just recently, that their local councillor is just towing the City Hall line out in the community. Those people want a councillor that is the community's voice in here, they don't want councillors that is City Hall's voice out in the suburbs. So we certainly won't be, certainly won't be supporting this item today, this first review. The Delegation of Powers, I'll come back to the Annual Report. We won't be supporting these delegations of powers today. This council is consistently doing less and less in terms of making these decisions. There's obviously, we have in the past and will continue to support certain delegations, but there needs to be accountability and transparency around these decisions. The administration can't just use, you know, what the Lord Mayor has said today as an excuse to delegate these decisions away from the elected representative body of Brisbane. He said they need to be dealt with in a speedy manner, these QRA applications. Well, if we didn't have deferred meetings for six or seven weeks, or we didn't have meetings that were, the delayed start time on the whim of the administration, we might actually be able to deal with these things. And if we actually had ENC dealing with things, if you, you go and read those minutes of ENC meetings and you see they go for about 20 or 25 minutes, there's no general business, there's a very, very limited agenda going through those things, simply rubber stamped all of the political staffers and the cast of thousands that sit in that room now, there's little wonder all these things are being delegated away because this administration is just simply not doing its job anymore. The Annual Report tells a story, Chair, and that's about all it is. The LMP, of course, and the mayor sort of, sort of spent a minute or two, I think, talking about and said how wonderful the Annual Report is and how wonderful his, his administration, perhaps less than a minute, maybe I was being generous. Their narrative is packaged up here in this document, informed by the hundreds of thousands of dollars of market research they do, and that's getting increasingly larger, that market research programme, calling those files is very illuminating. Some of the latest market research this LMP administration is doing is testing certain messages with certain key demographics, like men aged 40 to 54 on certain topics, and how people feel about the Living in Brisbane newsletter, and what's popular and what's not. Turns out the Lord Mayor is not very popular in that. But the Annual Report, of course, is not the whole story about what is happening in Brisbane. It talks about rates but fails to mention that because of the political decisions of this LMP administration, people saw two rates increases in one calendar year last year, and this year have seen the single highest increase in rates in a decade. Rates are the highest they have ever been, but residents are certainly feeling like they're getting less for them. People aren't getting good value for money from their council, and that's because of the political decisions of this LMP administration. Now, we value the hard work of the thousands of employees who go out there day in, day out, working, whether it's in our libraries or our call centres, driving our buses, spraying for mozzies, clearing drains, cutting concrete, driving trucks or emptying bins. Every job done in council is a critical one for the community, but when residents see, and if they do, the mayor's story in this annual report, and then reflect on the reality out in suburbs, they know that doesn't quite match up. The report talks about climate change, but what it doesn't show is that to become carbon neutral, rate pay money's being used to purchase foreign carbon credits instead of investing in local carbon offsets like FOGO right here in Brisbane. We've seen the worst suburban flood on record and the threat of climate change becoming real for residents living close to the coast particularly, but what is the plan? We know the Coastal Hazards Adaptation Strategy is funded by another level of government, and council's not putting any money into that, into that strategy, and not delivering any projects for the next five or 10 years to flood-proof our climate-exposed residents. The Annual Report talks about an inclusive city, but glosses over the fact that hundreds of bus stops remain inaccessible, and some suburbs like Polara still don't have any. Our suburbs are not accessible when there is over 1,000 kilometres of broken and dangerous footpaths and 6,000 streets without a footpath at all. And you have to remember the first thing that this Lord Mayor cut last year when he was looking for savings, bikeways, park upgrades, and public transport. So we would be a genuinely sustainable and livable city if we had a council that prioritised suburban- suburban investment instead of mortgaging the city's future on a few publicity-getting projects like the Lord Mayor likes to talk a lot about. Metro is a point in case. Imagine a city where we had a Lord Mayor with a plan to tackle congestion or reduce organic waste on an industrial scale. Imagine if we had a Lord Mayor who invested in public transport instead of finding ways to squeeze every single dollar out of it or privatise its operation to the detriment of local jobs or commuters. Kitty Cat's case in point. Now, while he increased the metro budget by $500 million, we've only seen a $2 million increase in the drainage budget. Now, his maths was a bit off earlier today. If you look in the budget, the suburban drainage and stormwater projects went from $40 million to $42 million. Of course, there is funding put in to clear drains and to clean them up and repair them after the February 2022 flood disaster, but that's not increasing the flood resilience of our suburbs, that's simply cleaning things after a mayor. So when the mayor talks about sustainability, what he really means in terms of public transport particularly, is a couple of Chinese-made electric buses and a couple of thousand households taking part in a half-baked FOGO trial. And when the Lord Mayor talks about clean, green and sustainable, as he is increasingly doing these days, what he means is politicising the Bushland programme to use $6 million to buy a couple of house blocks before an election. And when he talks about future Brisbane, we know he is not genuine about being a city where everyone can find a home. We all remember when he called social housing slums. We know he would rather give billionaires development discounts rather than providing support to community housing providers.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Move for an extension. Extension of time for the leader of the opposition has been moved by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Cumming. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Well, that would, that would have been a first in sitting a priest in it, I guess. But I shall, I shall persist. So we know the Lord Mayor would rather give billionaires development discounts rather than providing support to community housing providers.
Point of order to you, councillor Allen.
This has been quite a sort of a long-winded speech and I know it's quite a large ENC list here, but I've sort of lost track with what particular item councillor Cassidy's referring to. Seems to have morphed into more of a diatribe about, you know, the administration rather than any of these particular items.
For accountability.
Thank you councillor Allen. Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, Chair, talking, yeah, I can, well, if you want to bear with me, I can find the future Brisbane section in the annual report that I'm referring to now, which talks about housing and development approvals and developer discounts and things like that. Do you want me to find the page councillor Allen? You could probably thumb through it there, I'm sure you've got it in front of you. So the annual report shows that the LMP mayor spent less than $20,000 on the housing support programme, which is one-fifth of the cost of his own personal cash allowance. Those two figures are listed in the annual report councillor Allen, if you want to follow along. So when, we've been recently talking in the last couple of months about supporting homelessness in our city and pathways out of homelessness and into housing, councillor Howard and the Lord Mayor repeatedly talked about the housing support programme. Well, the annual report details how much council invested in the housing support programme, it was less than $20,000. It was about $19,500. And the Lord Mayor gets a $100,000 allowance. If there's, if there's not a better representation of the priorities of this Lord Mayor, his personal priorities than that in 2022, then I just don't know what is. In 2019, he promised to deliver a housing strategy to deal with the pressures working people were facing, putting a roof over their heads. And what is that grand plan? So far, we know through our investigations that one single discussion paper was circulated in draft form in 2019 and then no work happened whatsoever on that housing strategy after that. And the Lord Mayor's grand plan now are demountable buildings on military land with a large fence around them. And we also know what kind of boss he is. For decades now, this LMP administration has fought tooth and nail against pay rises for employees they have sought to strip working conditions away from. The 4% increase we saw a couple of weeks ago doesn't come close to the damage that the political decisions of this LMP administration have done to Brisbane workers. Recently, talking to drivers at the Virginia Bus Depot a couple of months ago, particularly the permanent full-time ones who've been with council a very long time, I found out some startling facts that aren't included, granted, in the annual report before us. Talks very proudly about our bus drivers and the public transport services, but what it doesn't say is that some of these permanent full-time drivers have not had a pay increase for 10 years. They, they might have got a two or two and a quarter or two and a half percent increase, which was hard fought through their EBAs, but every single time that was awarded, the rosters were altered, the, the split shifts were extended and that, that cash was clawed back. And they haven't in 10 years, some of them, taken home one extra cent in their pay packets. There is no wonder when we see reports of driver abuse monthly, no pay increases, that drivers are leaving council in droves now. The sad reality, which is not captured in the glossy annual report before us, is that residents are paying more and more and getting less and less under the LMP. We certainly could have a council that puts people first, invests in the suburbs and protects our unique environment, acts on climate change and prioritises on the jobs of the next generation in supporting housing, but instead we get the LMP for another year and a half maybe. The very, there are very few things that I agree with the Courier-Mail on these days, but describing Adrian Schrinner as a strong conservative voice is spot on. In a progressive city demanding better, I'm sure this administration's days are now numbered.
Thank you. Further speakers. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Wow, okay, just regrouping. Item H is the first budget review, and where to start? During the budget debate, councillor Cassidy claimed that budget reviews would no longer occur. Well, here we are today with OneBR clearly coming forward. The format does look a bit different, so I'll give him that, noting that we have changed it to manage how the budget is adopted at a programme level. This provides councils' programme areas to better manage their projects, with the ups and downs in individual projects within a programme now able to be managed without seeking a formal resolution of council. This is the responsible thing to do, and it is what the state government and it is what other councils do. The State Government Budget Appropriation Bill was just 19 pages long. Now, Mr Chair, I make no criticism of that, but I do ask councillor Cassidy to reflect on it. As the Lord Mayor noted, there are some minimal movements in this submission. Of course, given the challenging external environment, it factors in ongoing flood and pandemic impacts, projects delayed by wet weather in the April to June quarter and supply chain and labour shortage impacts. The anticipated accumulated surplus for 30 June 2023, as approved by council, was $14.019 billion. As a result of the first budget review, the anticipated accumulated surplus will increase to $14.024 billion. The operating capability has increased by $158.8 million. This is largely due to revenue, which is projected to increase by $183.9 million, largely due to transfer to future years for road-contributed assets from the state government and capital funding received relating to the voluntary home buyback. There is an overall increase in expenses of $25.1 million, of which a large proportion of this relates to flood recovery projects and a capex-to-opex transfer from capital for the restoration of the Story Bridge. This is partly offset by a $15.6 million reduction in depreciation in asset management. As the Lord Mayor said, our capital spend is projected to increase by $61.5 million, predominantly due to the buyback revenue and continuing projects. Net debt per capita is projected to decrease by $219 to $2,158 and borrowings remain at published levels of $326 million with no change in the end-of-year forecasts. Turning now to item I, this is the annual report. Now, I'll spare you from a 30-minute lecture of all areas of council. Just to mention, Mr Chair, that as well as financial governance disclosures, we continue to provide climate disclosures. This is council's third year of disclosure since making this voluntary acknowledgement and commitment in 2019-20. The disclosure aligns with a globally accepted and widely adopted framework and will continue to mature to connect to risk, planning and opportunities. The process behind the disclosure seeks to place council in good stead in preparation for industry body, accounting standard and the regulatory changes. We have faced challenging circumstances as a city, and as you would expect, there are a number of corporate plan items with a status of monitor closely. This is not a negative, Mr Chair, but a reminder that with the effects of the pandemic and of course the floods, we must continue to pay attention to ensure our initiatives are aligned and supportive of our residents. Finally, item J. This item includes a delegation to permit the CEO to authorise all QRA reimbursement applications for counter-disaster operations, immediate reconstruction works, emergency works and reconstructions of essential public assets. There will be a significant number of grant applications to be processed over coming months in relation to QRA funding for our flood recovery. Without the delegation, many of these claims would require an ENC approval and this is an unnecessary step for these reimbursement claims. I have previously updated the chamber on the significant work that goes into these claims and the finance recovery team has literally put in thousands of hours of work so far to meet these QRA evidence requirements. By delegating this power, we facilitate more timely processing of these applications to meet the QRA's timeframes and to provide a quicker cost reimbursement to council and to our ratepayers. This ENC also includes changes in delegations for other grant applications. The proposed amendments to the council delegation to ENC and the CEO will provide for approvals to reference the amount of council contribution rather than the total grant amount, and I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Gosh, just had a lolly. Excuse me, yes, I'll speak on all items if I can, but I would like to start with item A, just briefly, the significant contracting plans. I noted with some interest that Brisbane City Council is retrospectively seeking to patch up funding for the Gresham Street Bridge replacement project, which was completed back in May 2022. It's quite interesting to me that the requirements of amendments to significant contracting plan state that the significant contracting plan can only be amended by resolution at any time before the end of the financial year to which the plan relates. Now, if the Gresham Street Bridge was finished last year and now we're fixing it up this year, there seems to be a problem to me. There's no indication in here of how the contingencies were used, there are major contingencies that council puts in place for all major projects. There's very little explanation about the delays. Because of the delay, the Lord Mayor couldn't even be bothered to be here for the meeting. So he moved this meeting to this time of night and then can't be bothered to turn up and be part of the meeting. All of the information that we've been provided here is completely out of date, it's six weeks old. And we are retrospectively being asked to approve things that this council has already done. I don't even know if it's legal. I do not know if any of this is actually legal. It states very clearly here that this should not be happening after the end of the financial year to which the plan relates. Now, the Gresham Street Bridge Project's finished, so I think there's some very serious problems here with how this administration is managing its finances. They cannot be trusted, and this just shows that even with major contingencies for these projects, they can't manage those budgets. And it's not just big projects, it's small projects too. A council officer, who I don't know who it was, amended the scope of an SEF project in my ward without my knowledge or approval, built something else that wasn't in the scope of the project, and then I'm told that the things that were in the scope of the project that were requested by me couldn't be afforded because they've spent all the money, including the contingency, and I had to approve more money out of the SEF. So I've made a formal complaint to the CEO about that. It is unacceptable that someone is making scope changes to an approved project without anybody's oversight or input, it's just completely unacceptable. So I won't be supporting item A and I would just ask that that is taken seriatum for voting purposes. The audited financial statements and audit general's report, well, it's fascinating, isn't it? All through the auditor's report, he basically is saying it's up to councillors to decide what they're going to do, which means in this case it's up to the LMP to decide what they're going to do, and unfortunately that's what we see. We can see very clearly from the financial reports that council's not meeting its recommended financial ratios, they're very clearly blown out, well beyond what is appropriate. And if you listen to the finance chairman who reads off her notes, you'd think everything was okay, but when council can't meet its own benchmarks, there is a problem. It's very clearly in the financial reports that council's not meeting its own benchmarks. And I think that is incredibly disappointing and it does not serve our city well when this administration pretends that they're doing a good job, which clearly they are Contracts and tendering delegates, item C. Let me just have a little... Yeah, I think the opposition leader covered the $800,000, that sticks out massively, and the $400,000, I think it is, for the citizenship services. I mean, the Lord Mayor's basically failed over the last year to the point where, you know, people waiting to become citizens have made complaint after complaint to council and he's been fundamentally unable to deliver a service that this council has delivered the whole time I've been here. I have no idea what is going wrong with this council, but when you cannot manage a citizenship service in City Hall, then there is absolutely a problem with what's going on. Temporary local planning instrument, item D. Yes, I think councillor Allen, probably because he couldn't be bothered to go out to a public meeting of residents from Maruka and Salisbury, doesn't really understand the fundamental issues that are going on out there. So let me be clear, because I think he's about to bring his brand of privatisation of city planning to your honour. The Better Suburbs Board, made up of your developer and LMP mates, should not be allowed to make decisions for this council. Essentially, the LMP has delegated town planning responsibility for this area to four unelected people, three of whom are developers and one of whom is an ex-LMP federal member. It is unacceptable, unacceptable that they are directing council planning outcomes, and that is what is going on behind the scenes. The residents out at Maruka and Salisbury know full well what is going on, and if councillor Allen thinks that they are silly, they are not, and he should have gone out there and spoken to them. Councillor Griffiths has been very clear that he supports the protection of the workers' houses in this area, but he has very serious concerns with the loss of character protections in other parts of the planning area. And if the planning chairperson doesn't know that, then obviously there is a problem. So I know that councillor Griffiths is very supportive of this local temporary planning instrument. Events local law, this possibly could be a good thing, but it's very hard to know, there's not a lot of detail, so we'll have to have a look at this in a little bit more detail. The budget review, I just would like to speak very briefly on that. It is very clear that the LMP don't want any scrutiny now of their budget review. We used to get quite a long report, it'd be maybe 20 pages, and it's only a couple of pages long now. So very little information is provided to us about what's in the budget review, but there are, there are some very clear problems with what's going on. Firstly, it's very clear that council's unable to deliver on its flood recovery commitments. We are... Um, we are being given two-year timeframes to have drains cleaned out. Two years. And councillor Marks, don't look like that, I've had the officers on site, that's what they've told me. Um, it's going to take two years because it's not a priority because the emergency overflow is clear, but the drain itself is blocked. Now, it is unacceptable that council is going to take two years to clean out drains and there are multiple drains like this all over the city. Um, and it is just not acceptable it's going to take two years. Uh, it could take up to two years to get a pontoon replaced in the Sherwood Arboretum. I don't even know if council's going to be repairing um Cactablastus Corner. Uh, I've got parks that are still closed. It's very clear that council officers do not have the capacity uh to do this work. They are struggling and we are not seeing flood recovery being prioritised at all. The same people are trying to deliver ordinary course of business and flood. And it's clear in the budget um that council is unable to deliver on its budget commitments as it said it would. Um, delegation of powers, I'll ask that be taken seriatum uh for voting purposes as well. And I'd ask that the um, hmm, I think I needs to be seriatum as well, the annual report. So just on delegations, I don't support the delegations. Um, it's very clear that council does, this um administration does not want to do the the business of governing. They do not want to be responsible for uh for making sure that they oversight the financial management of this council. Now, it's very clear that's what the order to general thinks happens, that councillors are engaged in um. Just, yeah, I'm just wondering. I mean, I've had a resident contact me tonight, um asking why councillors sit with their backs to me and I do find it to be incredibly rude. Um, and I don't know why anyone would think it's appropriate. And I've had a resident literally call me tonight and say they've been watching, saying what's happening. And I'm just, I think it's really quite offensive and it's been noticed by members of.
Councillor Johnston, I, um, I could, this is, this is not debating the item in front of us and I could see this uh an act of sort of asking if you rule on it, Chair. Oh, well, thank you, uh councillor Murphy. Um, I'll go to, I'll, I'll take your point of order, but I'll, I'll bring to your attention, councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Thank you. Is there further debate?
I'd like to move an extension.
An extension of time has been moved for councillor Johnson by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Cumming. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it. Any further speakers? Not seconded.
Division.
Well.
Yep.
On instruction.
We're paid pretty well, we should be here as long as it takes.
A division has been moved on the extension of time request for councillor Johnson. All in favour, um, pass to the, my ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being three in favour and seventeen against.
Declare that motion lost. Please, councillors return to your seats. Councillor Allen.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item D and item F. Uh, in the first instance, item D, the temporary local planning instrument regarding the protection of properties within the Maruka War Workers' housing estate. Uh, I've previously spoken on this in the chambers and certainly the importance of this proposal in acknowledging the history of the city. The precinct also honours and highlights the historical importance of civilians and the role they played in Australia's wartime industries and provides further physical evidence of life at the time and of Brisbane's critical role in supporting Australia's wartime efforts. I'm pleased to update the chamber that we have now received approval from the Minister for State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning to bring the TLPI into effect. Through the TLPI, 180 properties have been identified and will be protected. This includes 163 war workers' cottages, eight original lots that at some point have had the cottages removed or demolished and now have non-original houses, and nine additional lots created since the original estate was developed. These lots also have non-original houses. The TLPI will ensure that these properties are protected and the key heritage assets within this precinct are protected into the future while the relevant investigations and consultation with the community through the Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan progresses. It should be noted that the TLPI does not seek to lock places in time, never to be altered or modified. Rather, the best way to protect heritage places is to continue to use and adapt them in a way that conserves the heritage values and there are some pretty clear guidelines around how owners can modify these homes without diminishing the heritage values. And this is just another example of how the Surrinna Council recognises the value of our city's heritage and I commend the TLPI to the chamber. Now, moving on to item F, the major amendment to Brisbane City Plan 2014, Major Amendment Package K. In 2019, council first resolved to progress the amendment known as Major Amendment Package K. Uh, Major Amendment Package K includes proposed amendments across a range of citywide provisions such as zone changes, overlay changes, industry changes, park changes, heritage changes and lastly, planning scheme policy changes. Since that time, in 2020, council resolved to separate components of the amendment to expedite the aspects related to the former TLPI for Lamb House before its expiration. Additionally, in 2021, public consultation was undertaken on the amendment during which council received 44 properly made submissions. With regards to zone changes, this includes changing where appropriate zones from emerging community zone to low-density residential zone and application of the dwelling house character overlay. Fifty-four lots are proposed to have their zoning changed from emerging community to low-density residential and obviously this will support future housing for the ci- uh city, which we all know is in high demand. The proposed amendment also includes rezoning properties to conservation or open space that have been purchased by council through our bushland acquisition programme that will ensure protection of Brisbane's natural habitat. There are proposed changes to overlays, including commercial character building overlay, the dwelling house character overlay, the pre-1911 building overlay, significant lands- uh landscape tree overlay, streetscape, hierarchy overlay and traditional building character overlay. The amendment also gives effect to several actions outlined in our previous industrial strategy that allows us to strengthen city plan provisions, protecting industrial-sown land while also providing a more flexible approach to land use outcomes in different industry zones. This adaptive and flexible approach aligns with our most recent updated industrial strategy, Brisbane, our productive city. Through this amendment, we will also modify various parts of city plan to streamline the delivery of public parks by updating the prescribed accepted development table, the biodiversity areas, coastal hazard, flood and street hierarchy overlay tables of assessment and the flood and streetscape hierarchy overlay codes and the park code. We will also undertake updates to the heritage overlay code to clarify the intent and application of performance as well as the heritage planning scheme policy to reference guidance on how to prepare a conservation management plan. And finally, we'll see changes to planning scheme policies such as the heritage planning scheme policy and the infrastructure design planning scheme policy. We need a robust and resilient city plan to ensure we facilitate economic growth and sustainable development across Brisbane. The changes allow city plan to reflect changes over time in line with community and industry expectations and I commend Major Amendment K to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, Chair, I'm just going to speak on one item on this extensive ENC, uh and that's item H, I suppose. No, sorry, item I, sorry, the annual report. Um, I always take an interest in the annual reports and I sit down with the, with the new annual reports and have a look at the one from the previous year and, and sort of just look for some comparisons and some discrepancies, if we want to look at it that way. Um, but um I think it's more of a report card, actually. I know that the Lord Mayor called it a summary, which I think sort of downplays actually what the document is, because it's a substantial document that tells what the council has done over the last 12 months or has attempted to do over the last 12 months. And so I, I gave it the, I gave the report card a C minus because it's not all bad. It's not all bad, there was a lot of good stuff in there, but there's a lot of stuff that we just don't keep up with what we should be doing out in the suburbs. And I know we harp on about the suburbs, we're not supporting the suburbs and it's true. And this 86% of all funding is for the suburbs, it's, that's a load of rubbish. If you ask any resident in Brisbane, if they think they're getting their fair share of the, of the budget uh in their area, I'll guarantee none of them are going to say they are, right? I'll guarantee it, unless you get, unless you, maybe they're a member of the LMP and they want to support you, right? But most of them see the inadequacies of some of the delivery of some of the services, not all, right? But uh, but that's, that's why I gave it a C minus, because you, you've got to start improving uh on, on the delivery of the services that the, that the, that the, the ratepayers of this city demand rightfully with the amount of rates that they've got to pay, which increasingly is going up every year, uh well, well above inflation. And I think we can say that now, councillor Allen, we're allowed to say inflation now, it's, it is a real thing. Um, and I know you've sort of played that down uh over the last few years. Anyway, so going through that, uh there was, there were some of the items that I just wanted to, that I always sort of go and look at just to see if we're keeping up with things. And uh new parks, and again, um we're, we're, we're maintaining our parks, but we're not developing enough new parks for the increase in population uh that is coming into, into Brisbane, in the South East Queensland and of course mostly in Brisbane, at least half of it anyways, um the people moving up from down south. And, and a lot of that is in the, in these new greenfield areas or older greenfield areas that have been developed with townhouses. Now, we're, we're developing a new park in Cassarena Street at, in Richlands. This is the first new park for a long time in my ward, uh but it's really, it's catch-up because these units of accommodation, which there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds between Progress Road and Government Road that have been built over the last half a dozen years, right, uh have no green space in them. And if they've got a pool, there's not even a place that you can sit around the pool unless you sit on the edge of the pool. So there's no green space around the pool. So there's no place for the kids to play other than on concrete. So at least this particular park in that particular development, uh at Richlands, is at least now being catered for and they're, and the officers are doing a great job in developing this space. And it'll always just be a neighbourhood park because there's just not the parking around it because it's on a main road, a half of it, you know, one, one side of the park is on a main road. Um, so it, but at least they'll be able to walk there and enjoy a little bit of green space and some great views of Brisbane too. The elevation in this particular park is great. And I know councillor Owen has some of those as well in her area as well and it's really good, especially when the fireworks go off. But I don't know if the view's quite as good as over at, uh, over at Calvingale. Anyways, um, so moving on along litter collection and again, um, a lot of our officers are doing a great job in the parks with litter collection, but we are starting to rely upon those uh community groups and organisations to do a lot of that work for us in the parks. Uh, so they're helping council officers, but really the roadways are now being neglected. They're just, we're just not doing that litter prev- litter prevention or collection, if we want to look at it that way, along our street, uh, along our streets, especially those connector roads as well. And I don't know why, and it, and it was, it actually improved quite a lot during Covid, but there was a lot, probably not a lot of movement in the, by vehicles during those times and maybe that was the, the reason why it's, wasn't so evident, but it is now. The parks are still good, but the roadways, not so good. C minus. Um, recycling FOGO, our, our, leader of the opposition mentioned this and, and we're just toying around with this. You know, this is 21st century stuff and we're still toying around. We're the biggest city council in Queensland or in Australia and, and most, most part of the southern hemisphere, right? And we're not looking at something that has been adopted by over 70 councils in Australia and some of them are doing a full FOGO and that includes dairy products as well as proteins and meats and things like that. We're just toying around with the, with, with vegetables, basically. Uh, and so we're not doing a proper one and honestly, you know, one of those that we, we made contact with some, some, a couple of years ago at Penrith, they actually make money. They actually make money for the ratepayer, right, on the recycling. So we, we should, we, we just got to do, start doing things a lot better. Um, grass cutting, that's improved, which is really good. We got a new contractor and, but again, um, it's not right across Brisbane because I, I have recently traveled to the north coast and I had a look at some of those areas on the north side and some of the, some of the uh grass cutting is just not being kept up. And so I got off the main road a bit, I got off Kempy Road, just had a look, just to see if, try to compare it between wards, right? And some of those, some of those, uh, some of those, some of that verge uh along the roadways and I didn't get into the parks, but they looked pretty good actually. But it was just the roadways together, just not keeping up with the, with the growth. So I don't know if other uh, other councils had the same problems that we did have earlier this year, but let's just say we got a new contractor. Uh, potholes, again, oh God, it's not just here in Brisbane, by the way, it was up at Purigian as well. Some of the potholes are just getting bigger and bigger because you're just not, we're just not keeping up with the rain events and, and they're just going to get bigger and bigger, the existing ones that we're not correcting. I have rung through on a number of them, uh not just in my ward, but also uh fringing on my ward, it just, uh, Sableton Road was a really bad one and a roundabout there, we're still trying to get that fixed. Now, I've been away for a couple of weeks, so it may have been fixed by now, but honestly, months and months and months, this thing is quite spectacular, um and it's just not a pothole as such, it's like a wave. So you see people, you see cars going around, especially small cars, and they're doing this. And uh we've, we've made, uh, we've made the complaint on a couple of occasions and it still hasn't been fixed, uh maybe, maybe it is now, but uh because we put in the complaint, the last complaint about two weeks ago. Um, trees, tree care, we talk about the canopies, but we're just not keeping up with raising the canopy of some of these trees along our streetscapes. We have a program going on in the, in Forest Lake suburb at the moment, uh to raise those canopies, but they haven't been done probably for 12 to 15 years, right? Uh, but the arborist that was looking after the area, uh before the changes, um, uh they put in for funding and it was approved, which is really great, and they've almost now completed the Forest Lake suburb, which uh is called Forest, Forest Lake, a lot of trees. Uh, but there were, a lot of these trees were actually grown into the roadway, right? And they've all been pretty much tidied up now, which is really great. So again, C minus, it's not all bad, but uh we've got to improve a lot more than we're doing at the moment. Um, finally, I just want to talk about debt. Um, what we owe, that was on page 40 of the annual panel, or the annual report, the report card. Uh, so we went from um what, 5.1 billion of what we owe and that's broken down into a number of categories, of course, which I won't get through, uh but we went up to 5.6 billion. That's over one year. Well, the budget was actually 3.5 last year, then we went up to 4 billion this year. So it sounds like it's just debt. We've just added another half a billion debt now. People say, oh, there's good debt and bad debt. It's debt, we've got to pay it back some, at some stage. It may be, we may have to schedule for a number of years, but it's debt that we owe, whether it's, whether it's what we owe our own employees in the, in entitlements and things like that, but it's, it's something we have to fund and we know that the increase in the, in the cost of money has gone up by 14, about 14 and a half percent. Uh, and uh so that's, that's a considerable amount of money, a huge increase really over, over last year. And of course, the inflation, of course, is, as we know, is seven or eight percent uh will, will be probably early next year, between seven and eight percent. And of course, we've got to cover all those things that we buy from overseas, uh and all the stuff we buy locally and that's going to be eight percent. And the budget that came down this year, right, it's, it's probably need to bring another one down before Christmas because there's a lot of changes that have been made, a lot of. of increases in cost and projected costs, which will have to be paid for, and we're just going to add more into our debt, we're probably going to have to take on some more, some more, some more debt on to actually pay for what we said that we were going to pay for, or what we were going to do in the last budget. So anyways, I'll just finish my comments there. As I say, it's a report card. As I say, some of the stuff I really, really appreciate and really support, obviously on the annual annual report or report card, but we've got to do a lot better.
councillor Strunk, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Right, speaker, item E, the proposed new events local law 2022. These proposed changes due to go public consultation next Monday until the 25th of November. As the law mayor stated earlier, these proposed laws will repeal the existing entertainment venues and events local law and policies dated 1999. This is Trinna administration is dedicated to reducing red tape on the people and businesses of Brisbane. The streaming lining of the events local law aligns with the Economic Recovery Task Force priority to reduce regulatory burden. The name change of these local laws is not just in the name, the venue in the former entertainment venues and events local law 1999, as the proposed local law now regulates activities as opposed to regulating the physical venue. So the requirement for defined venues such as gyms and theatres to obtain an entertainment venue permit has been removed. The provisions regulating these activities have been superseded by more contemporary state legislation and is out of our jurisdiction. The council will continue to have powers to regulate impacts from venues under existing legislation, such as the Planning Act, the Building Act, and the Environmental Protection Act and the Public Act. However, complaints in relation to sites previously regulated regulated as an entertainment venue will still be accepted and investigated. So the review of these local laws has happened in consultation with both council stakeholders and external industry groups. This was undertaken to understand pain points with the existing local law. Some of the external stakeholders included fitness industry representatives, agricultural show industry representatives, including the Queensland Agricultural Shows, Mount Gravette Show Society, Mount Gravette Showgrounds, Rockleigh Show Society, and the Brookfield Show Society. And the Queensland Government Office of Liquor and Gaming Regulation and Queensland Health Disaster Management Unit, as well as the Queensland Ambulance Service have also all been consulted. So as part of the review and consultation, officers have found that there is additional burden on events such as school fates and major sports facilities, and therefore both will be exempt from requiring a permit under the new local law. School-based events held on school grounds will also be exempt from a permit. So major sport facilities, including the Gabba, Suncorp Stadium, Queensland Tennis Centre, Queensland Sports and Athletics Centre, Brisbane Entertainment Centre, the Sleeman Sports Complex will also be exempt as they are controlled by Stadium Queensland. So where an activity has existing oversight by either council or the state government, these have been excluded from the provisions of the proposed local law. Examples include Southbank Parklands and Roma Street Parklands, as well as venues identified as major sports facilities, as per the 2001 Major Sports Facility Act. We on this side of the chamber are dedicated to a Brisbane, better Brisbane, and the streaming line of this local law make it easier for venues, community groups, and council offices to ensure that events are run smoothly and safely. I commend the proposed local law to the chamber, and I look forward to reading submissions from everybody, anyone who's interested in this, the proposal, particularly obviously all the councillors, as we're the ones that deal with this mostly, and I'm very keen to get that feedback, and I commend the officers for all the work that they have undertaken to the to date. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Are there any further speakers? No further speakers? Okay, right, voting. Here we go. I've got this, I'm pretty sure I've got this right, so first up is item A. Vote on item A in the E and C Coordination Committee Report, please. All in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
No second up. Thank you. We move to items B and H together, B and H. All in favour of item B and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillors Cassidy and Strunk. Ayes, thank you, please ring the bells, ayes to my right, ayes to the left. Put up the boughs. We've got everyone. Plaques, can you read the results?
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and four against.
I declare that motion for B and H carried. Councillors, as you're heading back to your seats, we're voting as a block for C, F and G. C, F and G. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillors Cassidy and Strunk. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, ayes to the left. Please be quiet while the results are being collated, please. Okay, please read the results, please, Plaques.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and four abstentions.
Thank you. Items C, F and G are carried. Councillors, the next block is D and E, blocks D, items D and E in this E and C report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Next one is item I. All in favour of item I, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
No second up. And the last item is item J. All in favour of item J, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right, ayes to the left, ring the bells. We've got a result. Plaques, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and four against.
I declare that carried. Councillors, back to your seats, please. All right. We'll be up to... councillor Hutton, economic and development, economics, economic development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Chair, I move the presentation of the committee from the 6th of September 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the economic development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 6th of September 2022 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Chair. I want to speak very briefly and start by wishing our Brisbane Business Hub a very happy second birthday. Some of their achievements have included welcoming 7,500 event attendees to 257 workshops and events over that two-year period. They've brought on board 72 mentors that have done 239 one-on-one mentoring sessions, while also having a 47,000-strong online community and supporting over 15,000 businesses. I really would like to commend Miriam Kent and Emily Moore for their extraordinary efforts in keeping the Brisbane Business Hub thriving. The committee presentation for the meeting held on the 6th of September was an overview of the successful Rediscover Brisbane campaign with the Brisbane app. Rediscover Brisbane was an initiative designed to drive support for local businesses as part of a month-long campaign throughout August this year, giving residents and visitors access to exclusive $20 a day deals via the Brisbane app. Partnering with the Brisbane Economic Development Agency, local operators put forward more than 5,000 deals to lure residents and visitors and encourage them to discover their own backyard. Outdoor adventures, cultural experiences and dining packages were all on sale for just $20, and they sold like hotcakes. Tourism is a key part of our city's economy, and after a tough couple of years through the pandemic and recent weather events, combined with the fact that August is typically a quieter month for the tourism operators, this campaign was a fantastic way that we could give support at a time when it needed most, when they needed it most, by injecting $370,000 back into the local economy. The results were fantastic, with 86% of businesses involved in the campaign selling out their offers. But perhaps more importantly, it got Brisbane residents to reconnect with the city and provided local businesses with a platform to be seen by thousands of potential new customers. Throughout the campaign, we saw traffic through the Brisbane app skyrocket, a 506% increase to the views of tourism businesses business guides from the previous month, a 114% increase of app downloads with an almost 10-minute increase in average dwell time on the app. Our social media campaign reached more than 600,000 people and public feedback was overwhelmingly positive. The Brisbane app is just one way, we are backing local businesses in Brisbane, and I can say with confidence that it was an extremely successful and valued initiative by locals, visitors and businesses alike. I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Further debate? councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on this item, Rediscover Brisbane. Firstly, I've never heard of it. I'm really surprised that 600,000 people allegedly participated or know about this. I think this is a masterstroke in marketing rather than any substance, because it just appears to me to be about promoting the Brisbane app, the very expensive dud Brisbane app that this Lord Mayor spent millions and millions of dollars promoting and that no one's using. So just to give people a little bit of an idea of, you know, one question here, and perhaps councillor Hutton can stand up in her summary and let us know, it's a stat that she pulled out for us. She said that 86% of all businesses had sold out on their offers. Now, perhaps you can tell us how many each business offered, whatever it was that they offered for the $20. Was it, you know, five, three, one, 10, 100? I mean, the these stats don't mean anything, because they are... Yeah, this is just an absolute lesson in spin for a dud app that is not working for this city. And if you went out there and asked anybody in Brisbane what the Rediscover Brisbane campaign was, I think they'd look at you with some sort of surprise as to to what it was. I am extremely concerned that Brisbane City Council continues to invest in this app and invest more money down a very, very bad, a very, very bad digital plan that this councillor started. And I note that councillor Adams is not with us today, because she's off on her Olympics junket. So thank you councillor Hutton for filling in, and perhaps you can answer my question in your summing up about how many businesses made how many offers, because that would be useful to know.
Any further speakers? councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to acknowledge that there was 5,000 deals made over the month period, and 86% of those were taken and sold out. Thank you.
Thank you. We now put this report to vote. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Murphy, Transport Committee Report, please.
Thanks, Chair. I move the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of September 2022 to be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 6th of September 2022 be adopted. councillor Murphy.
Mr Chair, our last committee presentation was an update on council's e-mobility programme, and I promise I'll be very brief. As the first major city in the country to enact an e-scooter scheme, Brisbane remains a leader in active transport innovation. In 2021, we were also the first city in Australia to adopt an e-mobility strategy, something that I think was very prescient of this Lord Mayor, who was the then Transport Chair, decided, sorry, not in 2021, but in 2018, when we started the e-mobility trial scheme here in Brisbane, and then the Lord Mayor has obviously supported our forward-looking strategy. Since then, we've been working to expand the availability of devices into growth areas. We've been increasing multimodal links, we've been improving the safety and accessibility of the scheme through initiatives like our Safe Precinct Nighttime Trial. And I'm pleased to report that the popularity of the shared scooter scheme in Brisbane is extremely high, with over 290,000 trips per month being taken this year. We've now passed 8 million trips taken since we introduced e-mobility to Brisbane. We'll be looking to renew our e-mobility strategy next year, and we'll continue to consider how infrastructure and technology can be used in this space to deliver the best outcome for residents, but also to visitors, to our city. We know it's not perfect, and we've never claimed that the e-mobility scheme in this city is perfect. It's always a work in progress with issues like parking and infrastructure, safety issues. But being there and being part of the change and evolution of e-mobility is better than letting it quite literally run over the top of us. And by being in control of the public scheme and continuing to evolve it as innovations arrive and new devices arrive, we are the best-placed city in the entire country when it comes to taking advantage of e-mobility to improve our city. Mr Chair, the committee also considered a petition requesting the council provide additional bus services on route P443. As the chairman knows, council operates bus services under a contract with Translink, and it's Translink's responsibility to provide funding for growth services, which they have refused to do so, except on very rare occasions since 2012. As such, council will pass this feedback on to Translink for their consideration, and will also be considered in consideration of our bus review, which is ongoing at the moment, and I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Is there further debate? No further debate. I put the report all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the committee report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of September, excuse me, 2022 to be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Matic that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 6th of September 2022 be adopted. councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I just want to bring to the attention of the council the report that was on the topic of the automated flood warning signs, which are a system we've had for some time, but they've been modernised, they've been improved, and they're rolling out across the city. There was a federal grant made available that has funded three. We will continue to fund another 12 this financial year in what we hope will be a continuing programme. There's been some inquiries about this, I just want to clarify how this will operate. Where there is an existing road close sign, that is the the ones that people will will may have seen, where they are sometimes up and then an individual has to come and unlock them and fold them down to close the road, they will be progressively replaced with electronic boards that can be turned on and off remotely. And that deals with a number of issues that we would have in flooded areas, because one of the issues we had earlier in the year, and we likely have again in a significant flood event, is an inability for the crews to access certain places because they are flooded. So because they are flooded, they can't access them. So if we can address that by having these remotely controlled and automated, we are able to do that. So the first three that are in place at the moment, Gap Creek Road, Kenmore Hills, Bowman Parade, Baden, and Lucy Street slash Station Road, Maruka, and the further 12 to come out this this calendar year, Lansing Street, Pullenvale, Bow Hill Road, Durack, Paradise Road, Willawong, Colo Bridge, Colo, Rafton Grand Road, Brookfield, Victoria Street, Windsor, Sherwood Road, Rockleigh, Formosa Road, Belmont, Grandview Road, Pullenvale, Brackenridge Road, Brackenridge, and Wyndham Road, Tin Galper. That is the first group, but that will, that work will continue on into the future as that, as each of them will be replaced. will be replaced. There may be opportunities in the future for roads that don't have existing road closed dropdown signs, but at the moment, our focus is those. So that is our replacement programme. So I just want to make that clear while people are pursuing new ones, they will be considered in the future, but we are addressing existing signs at the moment. So I just wanted to provide that information to the chamber. They are, I believe, a very good innovation, one that we will continue to roll out over time and I trust that the council will support this report.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, I rise to speak on this item about the automated signage. And I note that I did put in some suggestions to council some weeks ago and I see those have not been taken up. There's a couple of things that I would like to just put on the record at the moment that firstly, as far as I know, Sherwood Road, Rockleigh does not have road closed signs up currently. So I don't think councillor Wines is correct when he says this is replacing existing signs because to my knowledge, there are no signs there. Secondly, that road has only flooded twice in the 14 years that I've been a councillor, once in 2011 and once in 2022. And on both occasions, this council has ignored me when I've told them that the road is flooding. So I guess, you know, it's quite interesting that what councillor Wines is saying is the basis for putting these signs in just isn't true. Now, the roads that were flooded in my ward, which I have suggested get these signs, are in Pratton Street Corinda and Clivedon Avenue Corinda. They have signs. They flooded over the weekend, they're not on this list. Lucy Street did not flood over the weekend. Muriel Avenue did flood over the weekend. But I think there's just a bit of common sense to this, isn't it? I mean, you look at the roads that flood most regularly and you put the signs in there. Even councillor Wines is saying, we're replacing existing signs. Well, no you're not. No, you are not. The other road in my ward that floods on a regular basis is Oxley Road, Oxley at the Golf Club. It doesn't have existing signs. So now according to councillor Wines, it's unlikely to get them or it'll be at the back of the list. Meanwhile, every time there's heavy rain, an arterial road is cut and that causes significant problem for local residents. So so far, all I can see is that this council is saying one thing and then putting these signs in different locations to what it says it's doing. Now, there are priorities. It is the roads that are most frequently cut by heavy rain. These are very easy to identify. This is a no-brainer. Council officers know where they go out and they put these signs up. I mean, in Pratton Street and Clivedon Avenue, you can't get a council officer to go out there and then you can't get them to go back and cover it up. I think the flood signs were up for nearly six months after they were uncovered and it just said water over road for six months until one of my staff noticed and got them covered back up again. So there is a big problem with how you're rolling this out. What you're saying is not what's happening on the ground and the priority has to be those streets that flood on a regular basis. I've provided that list to council and I'm not seeing any evidence yet again that council is listening to where these signs can be most useful for residents who experience flooding across their streets on a regular basis. So councillor Wines, perhaps you can enlighten me in your summing up and tell me exactly where on Sherwood Road, Rockleigh, the water over the road signs currently are that you are replacing with the new electronic signs because you've already done Muriel Avenue, so it's not down there. So where else on Sherwood Road are you putting them? Because I've been told one side is in Sherwood and the other side is in Rockleigh and to my knowledge, there are no signs there at all. So please enlighten me as to where they are.
Any further debate? Councillor Wines? We'll put the report, all in favour of the report, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report please.
Thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 6th of September 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday 6 September 2022 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you Mr Chair, during the committee meeting, we had a presentation on a development application at 141 Anton Road, Hemant, and this development was of particular interest. It's a corrugated box production facility that will be operated by well-known firm Visi. And Visi's got a long history in this country and certainly operates throughout Australia and other parts of the world. And importantly, this particular facility has some interesting operational perspectives. A lot of the paper that comes in to make up these corrugated boxes is recycled. It's then sort of packaged up for bespoke users of boxes. And then any offcuts that occur within this factory go back out to a Visi facility for recycling and coming back through again. So a lot going on in the space of reuse and renewal of paper waste. So a positive facility for the city and certainly focusing in on some of the environmental outcomes we're looking to see in our industrial operations. The site is going to have quite significant production capacity and will facilitate the sort of packaging requirements of the fast-growing e-commerce sector. In addition to the presentation, we had a couple of petitions, one related to a development application at 23 Castle Bar Street, Kangaroo Point, and another that related to five-story development in the draft Sangate neighbourhood plan. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, I rise to speak on clause C, the petition objecting to the inclusion of zoning for five-story development in the draft Sangate neighbourhood plan area. And I supported the recommendation, so never let it be said that I don't support the provision of housing in my ward, councillor Allen, as you like to say all the time. And relating directly to this, to this area, the five stories in the Lagoon Street precinct as it's known in the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan, the Lord Mayor said, I think it was back, I don't have a date that he said, oh, August the 2nd this was actually, where the Lord Mayor said, he's flagging August the 2nd that he would be looking at incentives to provide increased affordable housing in Sangate. He then went on to say he'll be looking at incentives to provide increased affordable housing in areas where councillor Cassidy opposes development, wants to limit development. He said, I think there should be more affordable housing in councillor Cassidy's ward and I think we should have a really good look at his areas of trial location. Let me think, this is what he said, if you can currently have, say, five stories in the Sangate Town Centre, wouldn't it be good if you could maybe go six or seven if you provided a few levels of affordable housing? He went on to say, and I quote, I think that'd be a great outcome and I'll be looking at introducing that as a trial in Sangate. I expect councillor Cassidy's full support because we need to provide affordable housing. He says he cares about it, here's his opportunity to show he cares and we'll be getting on with it. Thank you Mr Chair. Well, I wrote to the Lord Mayor on the 7th of November, reminding him of these comments he made a month earlier, asking what the process would be to initiate that trial in Sangate, we said my ward but Sangate specifically. I told him that I'd copped plenty of flak for my position on the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan from the LMP. I was accused of not supporting affordable housing because I didn't support that plan. But given the plan was opposed by both the broad community and the Sangate business community as well on the Sangate Chamber of Commerce, I think my criticism of the process was warranted at the time. But I did say to the Lord Mayor in this correspondence that I gave very clear feedback to the neighbourhood planning team at several stages about the opportunity for increased density on sites like the former Gasworks site, which sits alongside the Sangate train station, I believe that could accommodate five to six stories. And as a transit-oriented development with direct access to the station, that feedback was ignored and that site was retained at three stories maximum. I also said Rainbow Street was more appropriate for higher density than Brighton Road, particularly with a short walking distance to the train station and the Sangate Town Centre, but residential development was banned there. Either way, I went on to say, I think it would be naive to simply add an extra level or two in the Lagoon Street precinct of the Sangate neighbourhood plan as sites attainable for community housing providers. It's simply, that was a throwaway line. I assume what he was referring to when he said the five-story limit was this area, not Brighton Road, but he may have been mistaken at the time. My worry is that those joint ventures can be tricky and worried that that's just tokenistic so we won't see anything happen. What we need is a genuine partnership. A pilot site could be the former Gasworks site, which is currently being remediated for origin for the purposes of development. If that site was purchased by council and given to a housing provider after a thorough tender process and the allowable height limits were increased, we could see an amazing outcome in terms of housing choice in Sangate. At the very least, we needed to see a regime of infrastructure charge and development fee discounts there. I've met with Micra Projects and the Brisbane Housing Company to talk about these challenges. I'm not suggesting and I didn't hear that those two organisations would necessarily be the ones to deliver that, but they have plenty of experience in doing that as well and their insights to these challenges would be invaluable. And I copied them in as well as Q Shelter in this correspondence. So I asked the Lord Mayor for an update about what the process is for that trial of affordable housing incentives in Sangate so I can work with my community and housing providers more broadly to get something like this off the ground. That was, of course, almost two months ago now and it's been absolute crickets from the Lord Mayor. So I certainly hope that my support for this aspect of the Sangate neighbourhood plan and my support for increased density in Sangate for the provision of affordable housing in partnership with community housing providers isn't ignored and those overtures and threats from the Lord Mayor weren't just that, weren't just flippant political lines in debate that he throws out there and then simply ignores the issue going forward. So I'm certainly standing here, ready to be constructive in finding solutions in my own ward when it comes to the housing affordability crisis.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Allen? No summing up? We now go to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report please.
Oh, thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday 6 September 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 6 September 2022 be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much Mr Chair. And before I move to the committee report, can I just take the opportunity to congratulate councillor Wines on his recent nuptials to the beautiful Brianna?
Thank you.
For those of us who had the opportunity to attend the wedding, it was a beautiful day, it was full of love, it was full of fun and I'm sure you'll have a life of adventure with your lovely wife. Mr Chair, the presentation on September 6th was on the Brisbane off-road cycling strategy, which outlines, of course, future off-road cycling opportunities and facilities within our reserves and parks. The presentation primarily focused on the implementation of the trail care programme and the new skills track at De Mendison Park that sits adjacent to the existing BMX pump track and provides an excellent place to practise off-road cycling skills. The track has a range of features including dirt paths and mounds, stepovers, step-ups and drop-offs and beams, all of which is built around the existing environment. During the presentation, the committee was also provided an update on the completion of Shan Street Park at Stafford, the Mount Coother Mountain Bike Draft Concept Plan and the Safe Off-Road Cycling Education Programme. Mr Chair, the committee considered one petition and one park naming request. The petition requested council install a toilet block in Highgate Hill Park beside Hampstead Road at Highgate Hill. With regard to the park's classification, heritage values and also the proximity to residential neighbours, officers did not support a new toilet block in Highgate Hill Park. Councillor Sri Ranganathan has been consulted and did not support council's recommendation. However, council's recommendation was unanimously supported by the EPS committee. Finally, the committee considered and supported the park naming submission to formally rename Gager Street Park at 121 Lister Street, Sunnybank to Richard Martin Place. The citation described Mr Martin as a World War II airman, distinguished local identity, a true gentleman, respected accountant and lifetime supporter of the veteran community. And I know the local councillor, councillor Marks, supports the renaming of the park. I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Is there any further debate? No further debate. I now put the report, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee report please.
Yes, thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 6th of September 2022 be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chair.
Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday 6 September 2022 be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Thank you Mr Chair, as I mentioned, our last committee presentation on the Tuesday the 6th of September was held and it was on an overview of ECHA 2022. The ECHA is one of the most beloved Brisbane events and we were also devastated when it was cancelled due to COVID two years in a row. However, to make sure that the ECHA is safe for the community, the vendors and the exhibitors, the Cars team are involved with ECHA prior to and during the ECHA by undertaking food business audits, pollution management activities, infectious control activities and building compliance inspections. Cars' environmental health officers are also involved in pre-event planning, stakeholder meetings and the operation of the ECHA. The EHOs are responsible for regulating food safety and environment pollution during the event. As you can imagine, lots of animals at the show and they do produce stuff that needs to be dealt with, so that's where the pollution comes into it. We also provide legislative advice and assess most event documentation, including permit and licence approvals. Seventeen EHOs performed business audits of 153 food operators, monitored the animal waste management and conducted daily inspection of the animal nursery, dairy and large animal pavilions, as well as working with state government to monitor infectious disease control practices to protect human health during the event, including hand washing stations and shoes for mats. There was no impact to day-to-day services of the EHOs as assisting these major events, business as usual. Obviously, one of the other parts of the EH work with the RNA, the Built Environment Team, they inspected 11 accommodation sites because these house 955 animal carers. So I'm sure most people know, maybe not here in the city but certainly in the country, these animals can be very, very valuable and obviously the people who own them want to be close by at all times of the day and night. So we make sure that that's possible for them to have access, but also it's safe for them. I'm pleased to say that council officers reported a high level of compliance across the entire ECHA and strong working relationships with state government agencies, the RNA and stakeholders. So again, I want to say thank you to all the council officers for ensuring that everyone was kept safe and healthy during this very important event for Brisbane and I know all the work that went into it. And there was also a petition regarding barking dogs and I'm happy to leave debate to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? No further debate. I put the report, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report please.
Thank you Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 6th of September 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday 6 September 2022 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you Mr Chair, it is a little late to give you my DZ death raise update, so I will save that for next week. However, it is important that we talk about the committee presentation that we had, which was on the Reconciliation Action Plan and the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander programmes. Our inclusive communities manager provided us with an update and about the ongoing community support and engagement on a range of programmes and initiatives. There are so many events and they're all listed, I do urge people to read the report. It talks about the many initiatives that we have, including of course Gathering, which is still the only Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander performance that's held in a capital city anywhere in Australia and we're very proud of that every week between February and November. The Reconciliation Action Plan has now been endorsed and is being implemented and... we have a framework in the form of One Council, One Mob for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander employees and their allies. And I really want to thank all of the council officers who have been involved in bringing the rap to fruition. And I know that there's been a lot of people involved, and particularly our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander team who have worked tirelessly on this. But I am looking forward to working with each and every department across council for its implementation, because it will occur through a council steering group, and that will be comprised of representatives across all divisions of council. And on that note, I'll recommend it to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. I put the report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the sixth of September twenty twenty two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, sixth September twenty twenty two be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. During the committee meeting, we had a presentation on Super Citizenship Week and a bank and investment report for the month of July. I'll leave comments to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, as I said in the committee, when the presentation for the citizenship, super citizenship week was was presented to us with a number of slides and things from the from the event over the cultural centre, I just sort of reflected and sort of stated that I just didn't think that the, that sort of a citizenship ceremony was really impersonal to a lot of the participants. And and then I caught up with a couple of those families, actually, that took part in that, and they'd waited a long time, and there had been a build-up, and we recognised the build-up of of people that were wanting to take on citizenship, but because of Covid and other reasons, it it built up, and let's hope we never have to go through that again. But I just want to, I just want to say that I I appreciate the fact that Brisbane City Council went along and did their bit. But it came at a pretty huge cost to Brisbane City Council, right, Paris, by the way. It's an eye-watering amount of money when you get over to that cultural centre and how much they charge you, considering how much it would cost to do it actually a smaller version here in City Hall, and maybe it should have been a super, a super fortnight or something, and maybe we wouldn't have had to use the cultural centre and all that expense as well. And it would have been a lot more personal, because I've been to the ones here in City Hall, and they are quite personal, even though they're quite, it's quite a large venue, it's very salubrious. People just love coming into that auditorium, and it's really a special, it's a special place in this city. I don't think the cultural centre is a real special place. It's a very efficient place. You know, if you want to have some sort of an event over there, that you're just focusing on the event only. But it surrounds, and and I think also the ones that we do out in the wards. I do one a year, and I know councillor Owen does a number of, a number of those, and I'm sure other councillors do as well. And it's just a lot more personal. It means a lot more to people that have decided to become citizens of another country, right? And I think it should be as personable as we can make it, and and I think they get a lot more out of it. And so I just hope we never have to actually have one of those super weeks, and if we are requested to do so, let's see if we can work around and try to do it here in City Hall, maybe in a fortnight or something like that. But maybe we won't have another pandemic, and maybe there won't be another build-up, but I just wanted to put that on the record that of the comments I made in the committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cunningham? Oh, sorry, is there any further debate? Councillor Cunningham, summing up?
Thanks, Mr Chair. Just to say that I think the officers did a really good job in trying to make it as special as they could for people, so I hope that they don't take those comments from councillor Strunk personally. They've put a lot of effort into those citizenship ceremonies after people had been waiting for a very long time to become an Australian citizen. So my thanks to the team in L M A E who put it all together. It was a massive effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Now put the, this report to the vote. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? We dealt with petitions at the previous meeting. Thank you. Councillors, general business. Are there any statements before we go to general business? Are there any statements required as a result of an office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No one rising to their feet? Are there any matters of general business? Chair. Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and I'll be brief. Councillor Davis did touch on it before in her chair's report. I'd rise to speak and congratulate my colleague, the Infrastructure Chair, councillor Wines, on his marriage to Brianna O'Regan over the council recess break. Chair, it was a pleasure to join the Lord Mayor and a number of councillors on this side of the chamber to witness their nuptials. As his name suggests, councillor Wines gets better with age, and there were some who wondered whether this whether this once-committed bachelor would ever take the plunge, but I think we needed to see it to believe it, and it finally did happen. But anyone who knows Bree knows that she is a very patient, strong, and determined lady who will make him an even better person than what he already is. Bree has many wonderful attributes, being a Carlton supporter is one of them. And anyone who understands A F L could question the chemistry of a blue bagger living under the same roof with the Western Bulldogs tragic. But clearly, love conquers all, and being understanding and tolerant of councillor Wines's passion for most sports will be one of the strengths of their marriage. Chair, let me say their marriage and celebration capped off the perfect day. The service at the magnificent St Peters and St Paul's at Bolimba was a traditional Catholic mass witnessed by a capacity audience. This was followed by a celebration at events on Oxley in councillor Howard's ward, where we were able to gaze out over the river, across to councillor Sri's houseboat into the distance. One of the highlights of the reception was the master of ceremonies, councillor Murphy, who entertained the, who entertained the gathering with stories about his good friend's life and political journey. Chair, on behalf of my colleagues on this side of the chamber, and I hope those opposite, let me place on record out congratulations and best wishes to both councillor and Brianna Wines for a long life and happiness together. Thank you.
Thank you. Further general business? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on the Brisbane City Council annual report from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. I would have done this earlier today, but the L M P voted against me being able to speak about a matter of importance in this city's life, so I'll do it in general business now. The annual report before us today has a lot of words, but certainly they're not the ones that describe what's actually happening in this city. It is incredibly concerning that Brisbane City Council tries to present a picture of the city indicating there don't seem to be any problems, everything's running smoothly, everything's on track, there's no problems, and it's all hunky-dory. I mean, that's the message that they're trying to present to the people of Brisbane. I guess I want to start by saying the biggest event, obviously, that's impacted on council this year has been the floods, and I spoke about that a little earlier today. Brisbane City Council is currently eight months post the floods, and we are yet to see playgrounds cleaned up and reopened, parks cleaned up and reopened, drains cleaned up and functioning, landslips remediated, roads fixed, eight months on from the floods. You would think that there is some sort of priority that might be given to restoring flood-damaged assets in the city, community assets, but when you ask this council questions about what's happening, all they can tell you is it'll be one to two years before it gets fixed. Now, that's a drain in Yorongga, blocked, currently blocked, chock-a-block full of mud. And its bypass, its emergency bypass is not blocked, so council considers that to be fine. And literally a couple of weeks ago, I was told it'd be up to two years before that drain would be fixed, and there are a number of others like that around the city. This is not acceptable in any way, shape or form. I've seen now, I've, despite the fact that for a couple of months Brisbane City Council tried to hide from me what's going on with flood recovery, I've seen the files now. You think that the E and C meetings are pretty quick. Councillor Wines is maybe once a month presiding over some sort of flood recovery meeting, and those meetings are getting shorter and shorter and shorter as well. So there's just no energy, there is no commitment, and there is no focus on flood recovery. And we can see that because the budget in this, the council budget is showing that the funds aren't being spent. So there are some real problems with what council says it is doing. I note that the Lord Mayor, even in his report, at the front of the annual report, says our flood resilient homes programme is working with flood-affected residents, and the rebuild and recover flood resilient communities programme is supporting council leased community groups. Well, maybe the sporting clubs are getting a bit of assistance, but I don't know a single person in my ward who's had any support from council's flood resilient homes programme. It's not available to anybody in my ward, and when I ask for support for my residents, like I've done in Oxley or Yorongpilly, this council says, no! You're not eligible. It's by invitation only. So this is one of the key things the Lord Mayor is claiming is an achievement in the annual report for this year. A programme that is not available to all the residents of Brisbane, and when you ask in flooded areas for support from council, none is given, none is given. That is the reality of what this administration is delivering in this city. The Metro, also another project the Lord Mayor is talking up. Well, haven't we now seen post-truth brought clearly on the record now by the Lord Mayor and the 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 chair, and you know, for for two years they've been proclaiming how bus services won't be cut, and bus services won't be truncated, and bus services in the suburbs will be better. Well, when council finally came out to give me a briefing, as it turns out, only ninety percent of residents in my ward are getting the same service, or they're getting a similar service. Ten percent of them are getting a worse service. Now councillor Murphy's cackling away over there in his seat. He's laughing. He is laughing. I'll make sure I tell the residents. They are outraged, outraged that you are cutting their bus services. Council is cutting bus services for residents in Yorongga. It's cutting bus services into the city, all things that I've been saying for two years, and councillor Murphy stood up time and, no, that's not true, that's not true. It is true. It's fundamentally true. Over and over again, the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy have promised better bus services for the suburbs, but not only are only ninety percent of my residents getting the same bus service, or a similar bus service, ten percent will be worse off. Off, not better. That's not what the briefing I got says in black and white.
Councillor.
Yeah, yeah.
Murphy, please, no interjecting.
Yeah, I'm sure they did. Oh, what? Asking questions?
Councillors, please.
Asking questions?
Shouting out across the chamber.
This would be the same council officers who I made some suggestions to go, oh, no councillor, we'll have to ask for that after the bus review. That's not part of the scope of this bus review. This is when, this is when the council officers came to my office, and I did give them a little bit of feedback, and they said, oh, no councillor, we couldn't possibly do that as part of this bus review. What's the point of the bus review if you won't consider advice from councillors? So let's be clear, these people couldn't even be bothered to come and brief me beforehand, and my staff are pretty outraged by the absolute fibs that Colin Jensen wrote to my office. They are outraged, not me, because they're the ones that had the discussions with them. So we'll put it on the record here now that this council has just flat-out lied for two years, for two years to Brisbane residents about better bus services. I know, I know that the first lot of consultation that this council did, its little push-poll, council had already determined the reviewed bus routes, it had already provided them to the state government, and yet it was asking for feedback from Brisbane residents on bus network review. It had already made those decisions and put them to the state government. That is how this council operates. Meanwhile, the Lord Mayor's signature bus project has blown out in cost, almost doubled in cost, nine hundred and forty-five million to one point seven million dollars, and that won't be the end of it either. That won't be the end. It'll, it'll reach two billion dollars for sure. And what are we getting? Less bus services in the suburbs, less. If you live in Oxley and you want to get on a bus, you have to walk one point four kilometres up to the train station, or you have to go back out to Blunder Road and walk one point one kilometres to the train station. Council officers say there should be a bus stop four hundred metres within every home. Yeah, there are on Oxley Road, there's just no buses that run down them because this council cut them in two thousand and twelve. And now they're not meeting the basic standard that they said they do. So there's another problem with this report. The Lord Mayor's signature project is a bit of a dud. I also just want to mention briefly the restructure. So a bit over eighteen months ago, this council announced a restructure of the operational arm of Brisbane City Council. And I mean, without question, I sat, I sat exactly here and listened to it, and I'm sure the people saw the shock on my face, and they've heard me speak many times about the problems with it. The complete chaos that is happening in the service delivery arm of Brisbane City Council is an embarrassment, an embarrassment to this council. It's taking a year to get a tree trimmed. It takes a year to get the sweet sweeper to turn up. The liaison officers will tell us they can't even find an arborist at council. We haven't had an arborist allocated to the south side for months and months. You can't get them to go out and trim trees, you can't get them to fix footpaths, and it's just a absolute disaster that this council has restructured, has removed all of the people who are responsible for the delivery of everyday services in this city from being responsible for their delivery in the community. It has been an utter failure.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers in general business? No, I declare the meeting closed.